...Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012. I'd like to invite our special guests or welcome our special guests that we'll be introducing in just a moment during public comment, but welcome to everyone that's here tonight. For those of you who don't know, we do have staff reports on the wall to your right if you would like to follow along with us throughout the meeting. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, our home, our nation, our God, and our people with liberty, justice, and moral. Thank you very much. Item four, do we have a closed session report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, no, we do not.
Thank you. We'll move on to adopting tonight's agenda. Do we have any changes or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Doesn't look like it is...
I move we adopt the agenda for this evening?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to public comment, and I will invite a couple of members of our public that we can comment on, if I may. I'd like to invite our partners with the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, Executive Director Kate Miller and the Manager of Public Transit, Tom Roberts, are here tonight, and I'll leave it up to Kate and Tom to explain why we invited them to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. Is this the right one?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, great. We're pleased to be here. We appreciate the partnership that the city has exhibited on public transit, and we're thrilled that we had this opportunity to participate in the ribbon-cutting event for the new trolley. Most of the credit must go to Tom Roberts, our Manager of Transit, and I want to give him the opportunity to speak.
Please do.
Thank you, Kate. Mayor Dunbar, members of the council, you know, they say, "Good things come to those who wait."
Yeah.
Well, if there was any proof of that ever needed, it was outside this building just a few minutes ago with a beautiful new trolley. You know, in selecting this new trolley in our partnership with the town, we were really thinking about the aesthetics of Yountville and the amenities and the standards that the residents and the visitors alike have come to expect of the town of Yountville. So, the new trolley with its cushioned seats and its better air conditioning and more comfortable ride and all the various amenities, we hope will be a great addition to the community. That, and of course, November 1st with the expansion of trolley services to include Mondays and Tuesdays, we think will be a great benefit to the citizens for many, many years to come. So, thank you again so much for partnering with us.
Well, and on behalf of the entire council, I'd like to thank you personally, Tom and Kate and the entire team at the NCTPA that's helped bring this together. I do also want to recognize, we had some of our partners from Viola Transportation with us for the ribbon-cutting, Cheryl Drake, General Manager, Charlene Hicks, Operations Manager, Kenny Schwartzbach, Maintenance Manager, and Jeff Giannini, who is one of our new trolley drivers. He will be, he mentioned, he's going to be doing the Monday-Tuesday schedule at least. So, we can look forward to welcoming him to town. And just a reminder to folks, because there was a little bit of confusion, this trolley is ready to go online as of tomorrow, but the new extended hours of service will be starting on November 1st, and those are going to be, let's see, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m., I mean, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, we will have seven-day-a-week service all day during the business hours. So, it's, we're really, really excited to be able to do that and provide that service as, again, as partners with the county and the town to help out. I know our veterans at the California Veterans Home are very excited about having the uninterrupted service so they can get from the property into the town and back much, much more conveniently. So, thank you. And we all did just enjoy the inaugural spin around town, much quieter, much more comfortable, less bumpy ride. It's really, really a nice vehicle, so thank you again for helping bring that together for us.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And look for it on the town website, and we'll be sharing photos, and you'll see it around town soon, but you'll see that it does recognize this vehicle as the first one that's been brought online specifically for the town of Yountville. And this has been about three years or so this service has been here in town. For the good or bad fortune of the residents of downtown Napa and the visitors, it just, it didn't take hold there for whatever reason, the timing, what have you. We took that opportunity and embraced the vehicle and the service, but we continue to have the support of the NCTPA, and so with that, we've really found a value add to the community for both the residents and our visitors. So, again, thanks all very much, and we look forward to many years of service. And I do want to remind folks of the numbers. Not only can you just waive it down anywhere in town, but if you do need to call it for a special pickup, (944) 1234. And also, there's a second number, I think it's more the off-hours number, (312) 1509. So, look for those numbers if you need them, but we can't have a more convenient and a more affordable mode of transportation in town, it being free to the riders after all. So, thanks again for being here and helping us bring this to Yountville.
Thank you.
With that, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? No, seeing none. I'll move right on then to our consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. Thank you again.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to move right on to our presentation for this evening, Parks and Recreation Summer Activity Report. Who's up first?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm over here this evening in order to see the PowerPoint. I know it's confusing, Louis. Here I am.
I'm easily confused.
Yeah. So, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you some highlights of our summer programs. So, although we don't highlight every single program, we do in the report, we do bring attention to those that are more seasonal, such as the summer day camps, the pool, some of our special events, and then some of our specialty camps that we hold during the summer, as well as our park and bocce court rental that are higher-used in the summer as well. So, first up tonight, I'm going to cue my PowerPoint.
What, you're going to take our picture of the trolley off?
I'm sorry. I'll put it back. Oh, thanks, Bob. So, first up tonight, maybe? It's not clicking, but I'm going to bring up Carol Rasmussen. She is our Recreation Coordinator, and Carol oversees all of our summer camps, Camp Wyville, our spring break and winter break camp and our after-school program. And I just wanted to point out that, oh, no, it's doing that thing again. Carol is special in that she doesn't just oversee these programs, she is onsite and active with these kids every single day, and I don't think that everyone really realizes that. Carol is based at the school, and her, part of her job is to be onsite anytime we have programming and to be active with the kids and very active with the school staff and with the parents. So, I just want to make sure everyone realizes how active and excited and energetic Carol is. So, I'm going to turn it over to Carol to go over Camp Wyville.
Well, Council, Mayor Dunbar and Councilmembers, I am excited to be here to tell you about the amazing summer camp that we just had. This year, first off, we started off with training. We took our staff and we went to the California Parks and Recreation Staff Training in Novato with probably 500 other counselors in training. It was a great opportunity for our new and returning staff to get together and learn all the new things for summer camps. Our theme this year was Camp Wyville. We kind of took it off the X-factor, the Y-factor, and we wanted to explore talents and the many talents that our kids have here in Yountville. We had 378 registrations, which averaged 47 campers each week. For our summer camp budget, you can see last year's budget compared to this year's budget, and again, we had 102 cost recovery for the year, or 101 in 2012, and that's always a good thing. This year, we tried a couple of new places. We went to Berkeley to the Lawrence Hall of Science, which was really fun. We had never been there before, and it was a really neat opportunity to explore all of the interesting things that they had for us. We also went to the Water Park in Antioch. We also ended up at the Sacramento Zoo, and we'd never been there before. We went to San Francisco, so we went to Sacramento this year. We also did the Exploratorium this year in San Francisco, and that was really a fun This year, I worked with the school district and our school to open up the computer lab on Mondays and Wednesday mornings for two hours. Our students were able to sign on to educational programs. There is a program called the System 44 that many third graders are working on right now. We were able to work with those kids to help go take their levels to the next step so that they would be ready for when they started fourth grade this year, and many of our, we had, I think we had six students that were actually involved in this program. There was a lady with the school district that followed their progress during the summer, and they were excited that these kids were able to work on this program. We also did the G.G. Math and the SumDog. It was all academic programs. The kids had fun and learned and didn't even know it. It was great. We also, on, let's see, we did, obviously, our favorite thing to do is to go to the Yountville Pool. We went to the Yountville Pool twice a week, every Tuesday and Friday, and now I'm excited about the new trolley going on Tuesdays. This is great news. Also, we got involved with the, we collaborated again with the Tug McGraw Foundation up at the Veterans Home. We were able to plant our garden this year. We did a lot of herbs this year. It was a new, a new chance for the kids to experiment with them, different herbs, and we learned about how to put them, and we did some cooking with them, and it was really great. Also, Tony Tapah gave us 100 tomato plants for us to plant here in our garden here at the school site. So, we had tomatoes like you wouldn't believe this summer. It was very exciting. You can see on our Fancy Friday Day that some of our staff there, we, I think this started a couple of years ago, where the, the guys started it, and they started wearing these, I don't know if you've seen them on Fridays, with their suit jackets and their pants and they're get all fancied up. The kids all get fancy with beads and everything. You can see Garrett there in the middle with his swim trunks and the suit jacket. So, we had a lot of fun. The girls got into it, too. So, it was a lot of fun. There was a lot of staff camaraderie and a lot of fun with the kids, and the kids got, I have Fancy Friday beads, so everybody puts some arty grab beads on on Fridays. We did, since we're in the new room, we were able to do some cooking. We did some cooking, especially with our garden, things that we were able to grow in the garden. We planted things as starters, not as seeds, so that we would be able to see some progress during the summer. So, it was exciting that the kids actually got to harvest some things at the end of the summer that we were able to cook with. Some of them discovered radishes for the first time and actually liked them. So, we had a lot of fun, and anyway, with our theme this year, we were able to discover all kinds of talents, from yoyos to, we did some soccer challenges. We did a lot of, of course, singing and dancing and made costumes, a lot of puppetry. We made a puppet theater this year. So, we found out that there was a lot of different talents with our kids here in Camp Obviously, we collaborated again with our, the library here, the Napa County Library, where we did a reading program every Wednesday. The kids were able to, we were able to offer programs every Wednesday afternoon at 2:00 for all the kids. We also kept account on all the books that we had read during the summer, and then they came in and did a big celebration party for us at the end of the summer to celebrate all the reading. We really worked on trying to maintain the academic, academic levels this summer. This was one of my, I really wanted to target that this summer with the computer lab and with the reading program. We were able to help these kids to maintain their academic levels through the summer, so there wasn't so much lost. The teachers have all commented to me already on how, the difference that they saw this year with the kids that were able to continue with the reading and continue with the math progress and the language development. So, it was really exciting. And then we also went up to the museum. Pat Alexander, amazing program she did for us every Tuesday, learned about the history here in Napa and here in Yountville, and we were able to, we made our own soap, so we learned how the pioneers lived. So, it was a lot of fun, and we collaborated with that on Tuesday so that we could just go right up to the pool. So, but we made it fun, and it was amazing summer, and the kids just had a great time. The end of the year, we made a little yearbook for everybody to take home so that they could remember all of the fun things, and hopefully, they did create memories that will last a lifetime, because I know they're lasting for me. And there goes, any other questions you have for me about the summer camp this year?
Questions for the council? I do think it's, it's great that you are helping bridge that, that period where, you know, I keep hearing the loss that can happen during the summer and those development years where, when you can connect and trick them into learning while having fun.
Exactly.
So, that much more prepared for the fall school season.
Now, I will warn you, though, if you have the opportunity or get invited to come over when they're having their Fair Factor food days, you may want to reconsider that, having, having been there and tasted a few things. What you can do with a tater tot is just not fair.
I know.
It sounds innocent, but it's not.
But we had so much fun doing it. It was great. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
So, Lisa Tyler, as you know, oversees our community pools as well as the center. She's at a conference this week on events and event planning, and so I'm going to be presenting on our aquatics programs. So, our pool was open 64 days this summer, and we were extended to 139 hours of programming per week at the pool. We had a staff of 20 this year, and 11 were returning staff from the previous summer, which is a pretty good turnover. We also had a new pool manager this summer, Sarah Wolf, which some of you may have met if you went up to the pool, and she did an excellent job for her first summer with us as a manager. We had 7,603 participants at the community pool this summer, which was up slightly from last summer, so we continue to see some growth there as far as how many participants that we're serving. Taking Senior Swim, in 2012, we saw 613 adults during Senior Swim, which is from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon every Tuesday through Sunday, basically, with the exclusion of Saturdays. Out of that 613, we had 318 were actually Veterans Home residents, so just to kind of put that into perspective. So, we are serving Veterans Home residents as well as local senior population during Senior Swim. So, swimming lessons this year, a total enrollment was 356. 118 were residents, 238 were non-residents, which was up slightly from last year. We did see a decline in the number of residents we served in swimming lessons, but an increase in non-residents. We only filled the first two sessions. We did have some spots available in Sessions 3 and 4, so it wasn't for a lack of having So, for, I keep having to pause this, I apologize. So, for pool revenue this year, we did see a slight decrease, and it's kind of interesting, I'll draw your attention to our pass sales. We tried some different marketing methods this year, which may have backfired as I'm analyzing it. So, we marketed, you know, if you visit the pool with a family of four or more than 10 times, you're going to have a savings with the pass. So, it was interesting that we saw a decrease in, in the pass sales, but an almost exact increase in the entrance fees. So, I think that all, though people thought, "Oh, well, it's not worth it, we'll pay the entrance fee," in the end, it really balanced out our budget. So, we'll try some different things next year. We did implement the $1 fee increase in July, which attributed to some of that entrance fee growth, but not a huge sum. So, the decline, we did only offer one session of Junior Guard this summer, so some of that is, is the decline there. And we also saw a little bit less revenue in the snack bar, and we saw more people coming with their own food this summer than we have in the past. Any questions about the pool?
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Not, question, just sort of an observation. I mean, just looking back at the tables, it appears that your non-residence community swim was up by like 10% of the people that were coming through and at a higher price versus what we're charging for the residents. That's probably what drove your, your sales through your front door versus the couple swim paths, which is more likely to be people that are here all the time.
Right.
So, but that's, it's just an interesting observation that even with the price increase, it doesn't seem to have deterred. In fact, you could argue it's not affected it at all. You've got almost a 10% total increase in visits.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the fee increase really deterred anyone, no. We would like to do it at the beginning of the season just to make a, an easier transition, but I don't believe it deterred them from coming, no.
Right, I'd echo that. If you really look at it, the decline, the decline in snack bar revenue exceeds what the total difference in revenue was. And part of that is, I hate to say this, but we had a philosophy of promoting healthy snacks, and healthy snacks didn't sell as well as all of the other stuff. But that's just balancing, but, you know, we're about $1,000 short in snack bar revenue, and we're only $800 off from last year on total revenue. So, for the most part, I don't think we should over, get too excited. We always take some energy and ideas and look at it, but I think, you know, we didn't see any decrease from the increase in pool revenue. So, I think your, your point on that, we do know that we have value, and we probably need to market to our strengths, and some of that's the external programming, additional revenue from private pool parties and functions. There's an area there that we want to look on a little bit, but for the most part, I think it's, you know, we'll never get to where I would prefer this to be on cost recovery, so I'm pleased with where we're at, but you all know that to be the case, that we will continue to subsidize this, but it is appreciated, and we're also trying to share. It is used by a cross-section. I still think that there, we have room for greater adult and senior utilization of the pool, so that may be an opportunity for us in marketing yet.
Well, I would like to also certainly to monitor if the uninterrupted trolley service has any noticeable impact on getting people up there on a regular basis.
Definitely. We have that on our radar to track daily attendance on, especially Tuesdays, since that was the day we had the most difficulty within our own camp, getting them to and from the pool. Our goal with the pool really is just to continue to try to see growth every year in participation, because as Steve said, you're not going to cost-recover the pool. So, if we could just try to serve as many people as possible, that would be my goal. Thank you. So, next up, I have Jennifer Carvallo, our Recreation Supervisor. Jennifer oversees all of our leisure programs at the community center and the majority of our events, and we are, she's going to present on mini-camps. We did try some new things and add some new additions, so she's going to walk you through that.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and Town Council. Thanks for having me here. As you can see, this year, and as compared, well, we don't have the comparison from last year, but in comparison to last year, we had just two mini-camps. So, this year, we offered five different types of mini-camps. We were able to partnership with Surfer Math, which is out of Napa. It's a teacher who teaches in the Nap Valley Unified School District, who has a business, Surfer Math, who has expanded his LEGO's and like, LEGO Tektronix, or LEGO Robotics, that's what I want to say, robotics with the kids as well as lights, camera action. The kids were able to take over, I think my son said he took 1,500 photos in one class and make many videos. So, if you go to YouTube and look up Surfer Math, you can see some of the videos that they actually made here in town with the lights, camera action, and as well as the robotics. They had a big showdown where, you can see in the picture at the bottom there, and they had a battle of the robotics there. So, it was pretty fun there inside the art room there at the community center. So, our goal is to continue to, to continue to expand these classes. These classes are done on a leisure agreement, which is a 60-40 split, so we hope to have more of our independent instructors want to do more classes for us, such as karate camps and tennis camps and fencing camps and such as that. So, if you guys have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions, council? I do, you were, that was a thumbs up.
Just give her a thumbs up.
For, I just spoke with a resident who's interested in instructing tennis camp or tennis instruction. How should somebody like that contact the town? Contact you directly?
Contact me directly on the website. My email's on there. We have a new program sheet that we would email to them, and then we would make a discussion off of that sheet.
Okay.
Anybody out there that's interested in, has a special talent that they want to share with the community is welcome to come in and talk about that, because there's people out there that have cooking skills, you know, that Maya Duhamio has talked about doing an Indian cooking class, and different people in the community that, you know, might have an interest.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, last up, I'm sharing with you our park and bocce court rental information. Compared to 2011, we did see an increase in revenue as well as resident utilization. We saw a little bit of a decline in non-resident. We did increase fees again at the beginning of the year, but I don't really feel like that's in a, excuse me, a deterrent for non-residents. It may have them being more strategic when they're using, but we're still less than the city of Napa, and our parks are definitely different. So, we continue to see positive growth in this area, and I believe over the course of the full year, we continue to see a lot of reservations coming in in October and November even. So, between that and the early spring, I think we'll continue to see a growth pattern in, in the park rentals. Questions on park and bocce court rental?
A question I have, do you have to turn away much business because of the commitments Monday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights for the bocce club?
I wouldn't say a lot of business. We do turn away the occasional rental. Typically, it's a business or a group that wants to do some sort of team-building on a weekday night, but the majority of our rental use, private rental use comes through for the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So, it calls, it calls just pretty well.
Yeah, it works, it does work pretty well, yeah.
Good.
I have one, I have one question. Talking about park sites, I know Steve had this in one of the updates, maybe you had an update, I'm not sure. On the north side of Veterans Memorial Park, the, we'll call it the test event that was done there, which looked very nice.
It did look very nice.
What, what's going on with that?
Well, we're just seeing how it works. I think there was some hesitation to utilizing that area in the past, so we're working with events as they come in that aren't, we only have really two picnic tables there. There's not a lot of amenities, so when the event is interested in bringing in those types of things, tables and chairs, and they would like that area as opposed to the bocce court or a picnic area, we're trying it out. It's something that I have on my list to work with Kevin and Graham in the next budget year to really map out possible improvements, to make that a formal rentable area.
It seemed like a, I'm going to call it a real catered event.
Yes.
I don't know if that was a wedding reception or what it was, but it seemed like there was, you know, that wasn't, wasn't just, "Hey, let's go out and have a picnic."
No, they actually came in and said they wanted to do a catered dinner for a private group of people, and they worked with the caterer to bring everything in. So, it was beautiful, and it, they were very happy with the turnout. So, I think that there are some small improvements that can be made in that area to make it a little more user-friendly, a little more beautiful, but I think that we will be going in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Congresswoman, Councilmember Hall.
I do, from a young woman, young family in town who have, and I'm wondering if this has any impact on Yountville Park at the top of Washington. The pavement is slated sometime to be, or the, you know, the, where people are taking their babies in the strollers, it gets very difficult right up there around, on the other side of the Yountville Lodge. And she said that their moms are having a difficult time pushing them through the, through the pebbles or whatever that is, the gravel, to get over to the area, and for part of the way, they have to walk in the streets. And I was wondering what, you know, what kind of timetable, because I understand from Steve that there is, you know, some plan to, to improve that area.
Yeah, the North Yountville Bike Route.
And has that, does, do you think that has any impact on people doing rentals of that park?
I don't, I don't believe it really inhibits rentals of the park. I think that for the majority of it, it is accessible from the parking areas. There are paths that are accessible to every part of the park from the actual parking areas. I think if people walk from the south end and they're on the east or the west side of the park, access is not as great, but that is definitely what the North Yountville Bike Route is going to address. I think if they're coming from the east side or parking in the parking areas, it is pretty accessible. I think that overall, that's a conversation Graham and I have been having for quite a while, is the pea gravel and that it's not ADA accessible as we'd like it to be in that area, and it's, it's on our list of areas for improvement of a more stable surface, because even during special events, the walkways do get clogged, and so when you have such a large population in motorized scooters or wheelchairs, they can't really drive in that pea gravel. So, it's something we've talked about, but as far as the North Yountville Bike Route, you want to talk about the timeline?
Sure.
Sure.
We've received the 90% design of the North Yountville bike route, which would take a concrete path from the south end of the park where the crosswalk is from Nap Valley Lodge, along the fence and then along the drainage to the concrete path that goes from the restrooms up to the playground. So the schedule for that is to go out to bid this winter and then award it and get it under construction next summer.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Any other questions about the report so far? No?
Well, thank you very much. It was a great summer. It was my third full summer here in Yountville and I think that we just continue to see some really positive things, so thank you for letting us present.
Great, thank you. And thanks to the whole team and all your young assistants as well that make it all happen. Thanks. Please pass on our thanks and gratitude. Keep pushing that healthy food. Trick them into it. Trick them into it. Okay, we're going to move on to our first public hearing. Actually, we have one, no, we have two. Two-parter. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number 407-12 about signs.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you two proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And these amendments are the result of the town council's meeting on September 18th and the feedback and direction that was given to staff. And most of the modifications are minor and they're so minor, in fact, I'm not going to go into them, other than to note they relate to flags, holiday displays and the applicability of the sign ordinance. There are two more significant changes, however, and those relate to advertising statuary and the exterior display of merchandise. An advertising statuary are items that are really intended to direct attention to a business and to advertise the goods and services. They are presented in an attention-getting, you know, oftentimes flashy way. And the best example in Yountville where, is the post-mannequin display at Bovine. Its whole purpose was to get your attention to the business and then to enter the business. And staff is proposing that advertising statuary be included in the class of prohibited signs. And advertising signs are already prohibited and what this would do is bring consistent treatment to all items that have an advertising purpose. And we think this is consistent with the feedback we receive from the council. The other big change relates to the exterior display of merchandise and these items are merchandise. They're currently regulated under the advertising statuary sections of the sign ordinance, but it really is an imperfect fit, because these items can't be, items that are displayed can't be for sale and they need to be permanently displayed. So they've worked well with artwork that's permanently installed along affrontage, but it hasn't worked well for merchandise that may be moved outdoors and in each day and which actually is for sale. So we're proposing a new definition and we're proposing that the regulations be moved from the sign ordinance to the zoning ordinance in each of the chapters for the commercial zoning districts. We're proposing that exterior display of merchandise be allowed with a use permit that's approved by the town council and with the imposition of conditions of approval for the type, location and duration of the display of these items. And we'd hope that some flexibility could be built into the conditions to allow items to be changed out over time, as long as they're consistent with the original approval and the conditions. We think that what this will do is do a case-by-case review of these items and it's the first time that discretionary review will apply to merchandise of this nature that's moved in and out and is for sale. We think that the clean break from the sign ordinance is really a positive thing, because these really aren't signs and they're not advertising. And it'll still allow these types of items, but it will do so under the discretionary review process. The last item I want to raise is our landscape design elements, because this is a third category of items that can be displayed outside. But these are regulated under the design review procedures and staff thinks that this is working well. We're not proposing any changes. It would apply to the original landscape design when a site is first developed. It would apply to significant changes to landscape design when these are approved under a 10-day notice of pending action. And an example here is the Angels artwork at Petit Logis. And it'll also apply to minor and incidental changes to landscape over time, which are bound to occur. Staff views the bicycle at Bistro Jean T to be within this category, because the bicycle does not directly advertise the business and it's not merchandise of the business. What it does is it contributes to the street scene, it adds an item of interest and it really falls into the landscape category. So we believe that with the proposed regulations and the existing regulations for the different treatment of these three items, that we can prohibit advertising statuary, we can allow the exterior display of merchandise with a use permit, and we can continue to process design review under the existing standards for landscape elements. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Questions about the staff report?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
I noticed that in the staff report, it mentions that bunting had been moved to under the flag section, meaning that if it's patriotic, it can be displayed like flags. And then on the other hand, in the, at the end of the actual ordinance, it says under prohibited signs that penance, bunting and flags accepted as permitted in section 17.92.040. So I'm trying to figure out the difference between those, that bunting and the other bunting.
Okay. The definition just broadly describes flag, banners, buntings and penance. It doesn't apply any rules to those items. It describes what they are. Bunting as well as flag-
Says that they're prohibited.
Right. And that's a, that's a section I'm going to now. Those are prohibited, except where they're allowed. And they're allowed in the section that describes the flags that are permitted for any nation, the state of California, or for non-commercial speech. And it also allows bunting when it's a holiday display that falls within the requirements, that it doesn't exceed 60 days per calendar year and is removed within two weeks after a holiday. And that's to provide the flexibility to do different holiday displays throughout the year, as long as each one of those is removed no more than two weeks after the holiday.
So then would patriotic bunting only be allowed at July 4th and for two weeks after?
Possibly Flag Day, maybe Labor Day. It could be broadly interpreted to apply to several different holidays, but year-round, it generally would not be permitted.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the staff report? I do have a question, when it pertains to the landscape design elements. I know it's going to be a little tricky when there are businesses that merge what would be considered landscape elements with products they sell. Artwork, we've had some instances where artwork has been put out as landscape elements when they're selling that artwork inside, that type of thing. I mean, we don't have a landscape business that has various things out in front of it right now, but I could see the potential for there to be that conflict. So how would that be handled? Would that be discretionary permissible?
Yes. A good example would be Maison Rais. And because they sell artwork, they would need a use permit to display that artwork. If it's a business displaying a piece of art, then that's more just a part of the landscape design. And of course, the art walk falls outside of those categories entirely.
And during the previous meetings about this, we talked about tasting rooms not being able to put out their wine bottles, because that's basically showing their merchandise. But then non-salable items that relate to the industry, whether it be a wine barrel or some other, you're saying again, is that prohibited or is that discretionary?
Those would be allowed as landscape elements. A wine barrel is a good example. It's not advertising, it's not product, it's contributing to the streetscape and the landscape.
So that, even though it might be non-permanent?
Correct.
There's still that, the language still handles that?
Mm-hmm.
And I would also add to the point, the wine bottles may be an acceptable, under the new program that Sandra referenced, if they put a package together and come back under their conditional use permit, that display may be approved with conditions. So I do think we try to address both of those. I will point out that we're going to need some real-life experience, because staff's tried to write scenarios and every time we try to write a scenario, it opens up more questions. So part of what I think we need is just a little bit of history to get a better understanding of how to refine some of those. But going forward, we're trying to provide an opportunity on both avenues for display of merchandise and for more flexibility on certain types of signage and trying to provide a balance.
And you're asking for two separate introductions and first readings of two separate ordinances now that we've pulled out that language on the merchandise display?
Yes.
Any other questions before offering comments? So I'd like to invite members of the public, if anyone would like to address this item, please do so now. All right, we'll move right on to discussion and/or action by the council. Is there any more discussion or?
I do have one further question. I'm so sorry. I just realized that in the, on page two or three in the staff report, it talks about an existing business would be required to amend its use permit in order to add the exterior display of merchandise to the scope of the allowed uses. And I wondered, how extensive is that among our businesses in town?
It would apply to most, if not all, businesses that have in the past displayed merchandise outdoors, because they don't have a use permit approval. So I can call out individual businesses, but it generally applies to this, this new allowance we're creating to display your wares outside, as long as it's approved.
Well, I'm glad to see that we are doing this, because that do, you know, make it more flexible and I think that that's an important thing to encourage our businesses. Thank you.
So if I can clarify the point maybe a little further, anyone that has this type of display currently needs to remove it, but they have the ability to apply for a permit to put it back? Basically is what we're saying, I believe.
I would say that they've all removed these displays, but if they want to do what they've done in the past, yes.
Right.
They would need to come before us.
And is there, excuse me, is there a fee attached to that?
There is an application fee to cover staff time in drafting the staff report, coming in the public hearing, but we imagine that can be done for $500 or less, because these are more minor items. Typically, a use permit deposit is $2,000, but we'd scale it back accordingly for this more minor use.
I encourage you to do that for our existing businesses. Thank you.
So any additional discussion about this item or is there action? Councilmember?
Yeah, I have some discussion. I am absolutely, have no changes. I really like everything that's in the ordinance number 407-12.
The first one?
First one. That's easy. The second one, kind of thought, you know, a lot about this. And my concern is that, I think first, it's important that we are going to allow exterior display of merchandise. I think this helps our business promote their own business and when they do that, we get more sales tax. So I think it's a, it's a good thing. I'm not real comfortable having them have to go through a whole use permit. First of all, it's costly, it's 500 bucks and everything has to come back to the town council. So I would like, I mean, I think our real goal here is to, you know, have something that's out there that's tasteful, that they're going to be able to use to get people walking down the street to come in. I mean, our, we want to make sure that it is tasteful. What we're really trying to do is, I guess what my grandmother used to say was, keep the pigs out of the parlor, you know? We don't want anything that is horrific out there. So I think we need something simple, just like a permit. And maybe we could have a form that they could fill out, they could set something out and take a picture or draw a diagram or something that's more simplistic. And maybe we've tried a little bit to try to come up with some of these general parameters. I think we do need a few more. I think maybe the ZDRB could perhaps help there. And then I would say that, you know, if a simple permit for a much lower cost, you know, should be a ministerial item. So instead of having a high-cost permit that has to come to the town council, so that's, I think it's going to help, you know, somebody might want to put out three wine bottles and six months later, they might want to, you know, put a nice chair out or something that they're selling, you know, and to have to put all that in to, and have all that discussion about a use permit and put it all in for 500 bucks. In a way, they have to come for 50 bucks at a time, we might actually make that money, yeah, but I would like to have it more simplistic and streamlined.
Okay. Any other comments about either of these two proposed ordinances? I'll comment on Councilmember Muller's comments in that I feel it's completely appropriate that we recover staff time and that's, that's what's driving the cost of the permit. It's not an arbitrary number, in my opinion. It's so that the town is not paying for the business's operation. That's how I see it. If, and we do need to, I think, control to a degree what is allowed to be on our streetscape. It, all of that reflects on our community and our town. And yes, sometimes we have to regulate things for the worst offenders or the worst tastes and that sometimes does have a consequence for those that have followed the rules and have shown good taste previously, but unfortunately, we need to, not unfortunately, we need to be fair to everybody. So I do think it's necessary, I don't want to be subsidizing a business's efforts to adjust their marketing plan and their merchandise presentation. I think this is a fair and equitable way of doing it, so that we're recovering the cost and there's still the flexibility that I think the council is looking to provide those businesses that want to just improve their, their street frontage and improve their, kind of their marketing presence. So I think it's appropriate personally. Any other comments on either of these two items? If not, let's take the first item. Vice Mayor?
I guess I'll. I'm going to split the baby on this one. I agree, first of all, I think all the changes, especially in the sign ordinance, are exactly what we had said and what we had hoped and I don't have any comments about them. I think it's, it's good. I guess I agree, I agree with both comments, if that is possible. Is that waffling, Mr. Hall?
No.
I think that there's, the fee should be recovering staff time. I don't have an issue with that. I do have, I do think it is, it seems a little onerous to have to come to this council. And I, and I feel like that whether it goes with the ZDRB or if there's a way that's, it's more able to expedite, maybe it's a, you know, you guys make a decision based on, you know, the general guidelines that are out there. You may say there are none, so that's, that's possible. But 10-day noticing and those kind of things, and if the business says, hey, that's crazy, you know, I disagree, they could appeal that. Because I, I feel like it's hard in these situations, that when people come to the town council, that we always say, well, we want to see the picture of what it's going to look like and we want to see the drawing and how's that going to look from this angle? And you have to go through this huge process and, and it's easier to have a conversation and kind of go through ideas back and forth, which they would do in the first place with staff. But I don't know, I, I kind of see it both ways on that and I don't want to create this huge process. And maybe it's incumbent upon the council to say, you don't have to come and get approval for every jacket, you want to come out here, but if you want to have jackets that, you know, you sell, that's what you sell, and you're going to put three out and this is what it's going to generally look like, then you can change things and we approve that.
Couple.
I was just going to offer a couple of comments to that. The reason we're suggesting that it come to you at this point is because we don't have any history with it. And by coming to you, we can get the discussion out there of what you'd like to see, what's acceptable, what isn't. It may be in the future that we're able to use those comments to craft a policy where we can approve them at staff level. But at this time, we think it's a good idea to bring it before the council, because it's brand-new, it potentially has quite a change on the streetscape, but there are options in the future to modify it.
I will accept that answer.
And I want to also, because we've talked, and I think you're hearing from staff a real, one, we do think at a level, this can be done at some point at a more ministerial or be one of those things that goes to the ZDRB. And you're, you guys are kind of, you've struggled with trying to provide us guidance on how to write something. So to be perfectly honest, we're not real comfortable about trying to figure out how to approve everything going, hmm, did we get what they were trying to tell us? Is this okay? Is that okay? Because if we go ahead and approve it, then it's approved. And if we get a bunch of people after- And if we get a bunch of people afterwards that say, oh, that missed the boat, so, but to your point, though, I do think if we were to say, we start this way, a goal is to have a policy discussion, assign the ZDRB the task of maybe working on some policy guidelines that could take it, staff does tend to agree that we should be able to get to a simpler place. We just need some understanding of what's gonna be acceptable.
Yeah, I would extend that to say, establishing a tolerance level and a, there'd be more of an understanding in the business community, I think, so that there isn't that kind of conflict that we're trying to undo something that we didn't anticipate or feel like there's a, there is just a lack of understanding in the vision that the council had for the administration of it. So, I do support the language.
I think, I mean, what you said makes sense to me, and I guess the situation is, what I think will be interesting to see is if anybody comes and actually asks for anything. And if so, then, then we'll kind of learn whether this is an onerous process or not. And it's also incumbent upon us as the council not to be stupid about things and nitpick too much. So, so anyway, I, I, I think your answer's, Sandra, it makes a lot of sense, so I'm fine with how it's written.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And I just wanted to echo that. I mean, I think that what this does do is provides a balance. I mean, there's gonna be some give and take, and we don't have a lot of test cases, and that's kind of what we're looking for. What I hope, and I think this is what's being echoed by everyone here, is that we don't want to make this an onerous process. We hope there's clarity to the business community that there's, this isn't gonna be overly regulatory, with the exception that we don't necessarily want T-shirts hanging at every doorstop for people to come in and buy them. And that's not that we don't want to sell T-shirts, it's that that doesn't give the landscape character that I think is emblematic of this community. So, I think it's well-written, but I think there's gonna be some test cases that will come up, whether it's this council or future councils, and we'll hopefully be able to establish more clearly from there. So, I'm, I'm fine with the ordinances as they're written.
I'm gonna.
Can I make one final comment? So, I'll, I guess I would like to add, though, if somebody wants to put out a few wine bottles, it's gonna cost them $500 to come in. So, if you happen to hear when you're telling everybody they can't have anything, that they really find, you know, the process of paying that fee and coming to the council onerous, if you could bring that back to us so we could revisit our decision, because all we'd have to do is cross out one word, use, and just leave permit, and maybe revisit that.
Well, and this is an introduction and first reading, so there'll, I think there will be more opportunity for those that want to and should be paying attention, that they'll understand what the exact language is now that we're proposing, so that when this does come back in a couple of weeks, then that will be the time they should have already or will have an opportunity to speak up about that.
There is one clarification, because it is a conditional use permit. This is some good stuff. People, when they come to amend their existing conditional use permit or they start with their initial use permit, the conditions for the merchandise display can be incorporated at that point in time when they're doing it. That's just, that is something to understand in terms of how the use permit uses. So, if, if somebody wants to look at several changes, the merchandise display can be part of it or separate. And I think Bob and Sandra can work with somebody, and if we see somebody with a very simple, straightforward merchandise display, we don't necessarily need to charge 500. Remember, it's a deposit. We actually give them back. So, if they give us good stuff and we only take an hour or so, they're not gonna, they're not gonna charge them all the $500.
Yeah, I was gonna.
So, that's just an up to a maximum. That's a very important part of clarity.
And staff was just giving that as a, as a, an estimate. We were talking about cost recovery for staff time. That's not a guaranteed flat fee.
It's not a fee.
That was an estimate on what it could be based on the amount of time often staff puts toward this kind of an effort. Is that correct?
I was gonna mention that the, the concept of minor and incidental is already a mechanism that's in the zoning ordinance, that that's how we do the 10-day reviews at staff level. That's at a much lower cost of just posting a notice as opposed to, that's writing a staff report, publishing a notice, public hearing, coming to the meeting. That's more cost, staff costs. So, it's not a flat $500. It's, it's based on relative staff time that goes into this. The minor and incidental is much lower, but that, that is the crux of the problem of determining, in this case, what that would be, what is minor and incidental.
A few wine bottles sitting on a wine barrel would be, it would still have to come to the council, is what you're saying, but it wouldn't cost very much.
Well, if we worked through to a process where we determine that's an acceptable level of display, we would do that at staff level. It would be a 10-day notice that the ZDRB and the council would be made aware of. It would also be posted around town. After expiration of the 10 days, it would be deemed approved.
That makes, that cuts things out, I think, you know, significantly. So, you know, if it's, the maximum would probably be up to $500. It could be a lot less, and it could be just a 10-day noticing. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's in essence of just, you know, having a permit.
Yes, and what that gets at is, when we make a decision through the minor and incidental mechanism, our decisions are appealable on up to you.
Fine.
And it allows anyone to appeal that decision on up.
Okay.
Great. I'm gonna bring this back to address the first, it sounds like we have some direction on this first ordinance. Is there a motion on 9A, number one, regarding the ordinance 407-12 related to signs?
I'll make a motion, introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number 407-12, amending the Anvil Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 92, signs.
I'll, uh, second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a second motion to introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number 408-12, amending the Anvil Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 08, definitions, Chapter 17 dot 48, primary commercial, Chapter 17 dot 52, residential scaled commercial, and Chapter 17 dot 56, old-town commercial.
I'll second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous also. Thank you very much. Good work, planning department, building and planning, land use. So, it's most likely we'll see that second reading in the, in a couple of weeks. Is that anticipated?
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to administrative regular items, item 10 on the agenda, approving a memorandum of understanding with the Sustainable Energy and Economic Development Fund, number one, et cetera.
Staff report, please.
Council. Interesting project came along and dropped in our lap, wasn't really on our schedule but, and in our capital improvement program. But the California Energy Commis, Initiative, Solar Initiative has put together grant, and this is about the fourth round of funding. There's a project down in Santa Clara County where several agencies get together and they do a joint cooperative purchase of solar panels for their facilities. They did comparisons of bids and found a savings of about 10%. So, this is something we've been talking about because our largest cost at the wastewater treatment plant is electricity for pumping. So, this would offset those. The other advantage with photovoltaic panels, solar panels, is that essentially set the price, and so PG&E, as their prices go up, you're still, you know, have this, this free electricity. You pay for the system, but then you're just getting, creating electricity from the sun. So, there are advantages there. So, we were proposing to look for, look into this. There was also a site assessment done by this, this group, and they looked at several buildings here in town, the treatment plant, the pump station, town hall, community center, community hall, and said, okay, are these viable? You know, is this something we want to move forward with? The two definite ones that they're, think most likely would move forward would be solar panels at the pump station, southeast end of town. Obviously, that's where we use a lot of our electricity, too. And then the wastewater treatment plant. So, we have the space, we have enough room to do the panels. So, moving forward, the, there are several options for purchasing these solar panels. This is done industry-wide. If you have the cash, you can go out and just purchase them outright. If you want to enter an agreement with an agency or a company that has tax benefits, you can do a power purchase agreement. You can also do bonds, or in this case, what will probably make most sense for the town as we get into this is a lease purchase agreement. So, essentially, over eight years, we'll be paying for the installation, eight-year from the ninth to the 25th year. It's, you know, essentially coming back as it would on other financing options. So, it's not new, it's not a new lease, it's not a bond, it's not the financing we've been talking about. But this would be an option for, essentially to purchase, kind of like our on-bill financing for the methane capture project. So, what we're proposing tonight is do a budget adjustment to put $25,000 into the budget, and this would be to work with our on-call consultants, John Draper, who's with Regional Government Services. He would essentially be managing this project through the RFP. The coalition, you might call it, would put together a request for proposal that would go out together with other agencies. Then that, we'd receive the proposals back, those would come to you, we, essentially the town acts on its own, present those, and then you would make a decision on if you want to move forward with this contractor on the design-build contract. So, before you tonight is a memorandum of agreement, which does have some outs if you decide not to move forward. It's been reviewed by the town attorney to essentially join this, this group for a cooperative purchase, also a budget adjustment for $25,000 to get us through the design phase. That, I can answer any questions you may have.
Question about the staff report. Councilmember Mueller?
Um, I, I know we originally had this project under capital projects because it was town-wide, and we were gonna include the, the town hall as well as the community center. So, my question is, why could not, why couldn't we put this under the WW Capital Improvement Fund? It seems, because we've kind of excluded the town hall and the community center, it's just gonna be for wastewater treatment, even though it's a one-time charge, it's just like the methane capture. Why wouldn't this be supported by the, the ratepayers within the enterprise fund?
We can do that. The capital improvement program had written it up as town-wide, but if it's just for the, now, again, we have two parts of the wastewater enterprise fund. We have the collection system with the pump station, and we have the joint treatment plant, but I'm sure we could work out something to keep it all within the enterprise fund if we move only forward with these two projects. So, if.
Well, what about this $25,000 that we're talking about tonight?
Right. That would also be from the wastewater.
So, we, even though if we approve this resolution, even though it says CP-0006, and later down the line, you really wanted Kathleen advise you to, that it would be a good idea to put it under the enterprise fund? That could be changed later?
Well, we could probably change it with the resolution if the council wants to move forward.
Right. What I would also say is, right now, in the CIP, the town-wide photovoltaic is a concept plan. So, if you thought about it, you could break that project down and have a A project, a B project, and a C project, and the A project would be charged to the enterprise fund where it's deriving from. And a future B or C project could be the community center. So, yes, I mean, appropriately, if we move forward and it's only going to be benefiting the enterprise system, then we can, we will move the allocation and correct that once we know that that's exactly where that project is going. So, there's some flexibility yet in terms of how that would go. But yes, if it's only gonna benefit the wastewater treatment plant, then we would charge it appropriately to that account. And I do want to make sure everybody understands that this program works very similar in a concept to the, if you may remember, a year and a half or two years ago when we did the energy grant for the streetlights and the, some of the renovations here, where we're basically paying back a loan from the California Energy Commission based on the generated savings that the project would do. So, here, the threshold premise is that we're going to save enough money off our utility bill by going to solar, that the savings will allow us to pay for the solar, and then we will have the benefit many years longer after that initial payback. That is the structure and kind of approach. So, it's in that similar, it's using that ESCO language under state purchasing and how they bundle some of those types of programs.
I have one more question.
Additional questions?
Yeah. Except if we do go with lease, lease purchase, eventually, we're gonna be buying something which is gonna cost money. So, we'll find all that out for this $25,000 or get a lot more information. That really was my question. I do have one more after that, but.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the other, since, part of this is gonna be going to what I always call the Bardessono pump station. Would we actually put the arrays out there or will?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there'll be some solar panel arrays at the pump station.
And some at the corff yard.
Yeah, down south of the pond, sort of in the southeast corner, there's a vacant area south of the ponds.
What do you think, I just, because my main question is, what do you think about security out there? I mean, these things are getting stolen all the time. I don't know where they're going, but people are.
I did ask the, the people from Optini about that, and there have been, you know, thefts in the valley. Fortunately, both our sites are pretty secure. They are, they can design in alarm systems, but they, what they found is that with the prices and the availability of solar panels, it hasn't been much of a problem lately than it was a couple of years ago. A lot of people were stealing to get the panels, but that's, that pretty much tapered off over the last year or so.
They went someplace else, I guess.
Copper wire.
Yeah, right.
Or silicon market fell apart.
Other questions? Councilmember Hall, any questions?
I just have a comment about the security, only because I administer a fairly large solar array here in the valley, and the security on those things has gotten extremely sophisticated in that it's very difficult to remove panels without everyone on the planet knowing. That being said, I mean, there's always a risk of that. I did have one question with regards to this. I know this is just really to join or to be a part of a larger consortium that would be evaluating a project or getting the project evaluated from our standpoint. And I profess, I don't know, and I didn't see it in here. Have we done this evaluation before and looked at what payback periods and things are for solar projects? And I, notwithstanding the qualitative value of doing such a project?
What they looked at is generally for other agencies over the last three to five years is about eight years is when you're paying it back.
As long as we're being realistic.
Yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, Graham. I'm, I'm wondering, because when you began your conversation, you said that this opportunity and had been a grant, and I really have not been able to read that into, is it just the ability to join the consortium or what is the, is there a grant amount or what is the, will you explain that to me?
Sure. The California Solar Initiative put together a grant to cover what has been difficult for a lot of agencies, is that upfront work of the evaluation, the site assessments and stuff like that. So, they funded that, the upfront work to evaluate, is this a good project for the town or other agencies of the county? And, but as part of this program, there's a 2% administrative fee that they're asking for, and this is where you get into the state revolving fund, where the money keeps regenerating and people keep borrowing, and then you pay it back and you borrow more. So, the, it's essentially as we, if the town moves forward, pay that back, the state, the revolving loan, then that gives more money to regenerate it. So, essentially, the grant was to cover just the upfront costs.
I see.
But the financing will be an ongoing payback over the eight years or 20 years or whatever the sort of finance we come up with with the program.
Thank you.
But really, just in the initial phases, as we get more information, we'll come back to you with the request proposal and then the RFP, with the proposals. And you, like I said, there are some places where if the town council decides not to move forward, it doesn't seem cost-effective. At this time, you know, we can, there are essentially options in the agreement that says we don't have to proceed.
Well, I think it's very important since the cost at the wastewater treatment plant, for example, for electricity, and if we can generate our own to make that, you know, bring that, I think that's all good. Thank you.
With regard to the resolution, I'd like to offer one language clarification to reflect some of the council's comments. Under the now-therefore number two, staff would like to add, at the period after CP-0006 and direct staff to appropriately allocate cost out to enterprise funds. So, that, that way, we will make sure that the, there will be a cleanup when we have the whole project, but that way, if you do choose to proceed, the cost allocation will be borne out to the two enterprise funds appropriately.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Well, I feel like in general, you've answered my questions. I go back to this concept, and we refer to the premises, their savings. So, when we keep talking about charging this to the wastewater fund, my assumption is we're not doing this because, you know, it's a nice project and wouldn't that be nice? But there's actually the financial reason to do it. And I, you know, we always talk about what's a reasonable payback time. I think that's always the magic question. But, so you're, you are saying that this $25,000, we will get a definitive answer from somebody who's not a salesperson that is gonna say that here's the payback time, here's what a reasonable maintenance cost is, everybody acts like there's never maintenance, and those kind of, of things for this. Because what I don't want to do is, I don't want to do the qual, I guess, the qualitative, don't we feel great about having solar, which I think would be great, on the flip side to say, and by the way, ratepayers, who we just raised your rates, you get to pay more because it's not our money we're talking about, it's somebody else subsidizing it, if that's hopefully not the case. So, this $25,000. not the case. So this $25,000, will answer those questions?
Well, the $25,000 is to work with Optini and Solar Energy Initiative, and they will get us the answers. So it's more of the administrative end of the project. They're not going to do everything for us. We still need to do some of the request proposals. But what I expect from Optini is to get a more detailed report than what's in here that says, this is what, you know, we look at. The other thing that they do is they get actually two bid options. One is the full purchase. So if the town council, you know, wanted to do a full purchase, then you get much more payback or savings over 25 years, or the lease purchase option. And so we get two bids, actually. So you can evaluate which would be more cost, well, we'll know which one would be more cost-effective, but the town council can choose, how do you want to move forward with awarding the contract? So that, essentially, we would get, with those bids, we would know how soon could we get the payback.
So use some sloppy language. Optini is not here to sell us solar panels. They're here, they're a professional organization that can evaluate this.
Correct.
You know.
Right. They're not the, they're not the design-build, they help us to hire the design-build company that's selling it.
Or consultants.
Yes.
And also, the $25,000 allocation is an allocation, this project was not in our current workload. So what this really is, the $25,000, is to bring in an on-call person to help us as an extension of town staff, wearing the town staff hat to support this. Otherwise, we do not have the administrative capacity to do this project at this point and take advantage of the opportunity. This, this would be, I just want to make, and it may not cost us all $25,000.
Right.
You know, that's something that is going to be using our existing on-call engineer to help us bring this project forward, or it would sit a few more years until Graham's plate was less full. So I just want to clarify that this person is wearing our hat.
Vice Mayor?
So last question. I know we have $25,000 in our capital projects funds. Do we have $25,000 in our wastewater fund, which we've had to raise our rates? I don't think that's there, is it, at this point? So we would, I guess what I would hope is that if we say this really didn't, this really didn't pan out at all, is that we're not going to turn around and charge the wastewater customers for our looking into this and...
But I also think, and that's why I'm kind of giving you that wiggle room in there.
Okay.
We want to, you've identified something, I think, very important. We believe, long-term, that this could have a positive impact on the cost of operating the utility systems and therefore, hopefully, limit future rate increases. Because if we can...
We're going to get past believe and hopefully, right, with this?
That's the goal. And I'm just saying, but the premise really is, you know...
I'm not trying to be cheeky. I'm, I'm serious.
But I'm, and we're being serious in the sense that that is our number one biggest use of our PG&E bill. It's tied to those two. So whatever we can do, as long as it's sustainable, you know, that's why I'm saying, if the system we buy into on an eight or 10-year recovery has a 25-year payback or lifecycle, we're good. We're going to, we're going to see a positive savings in the last 15 years. So that's, that's the premise that we're working on right now and trying to tighten that and...
Okay. Well, the other premise to, to bring up is, we have greenhouse gas initiatives. We have the AB32. So we have requirements to reduce our greenhouse gases, and there's about, I can't remember if it was, 1 kilowatt is like one ton. So there are reductions that we're going to be hearing more about, obviously, with our greenhouse gas reduction requirements. So there are, as, in addition to the saving the ratepayers on future electric bills for wastewater system, we're also going to be reducing greenhouse gases, which then we turn around until the state we've reduced our greenhouse gases.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think I'm sharing similar feeling of caution about moving forward, because I certainly have supported the idea of getting photovoltaics or whatever the technology of the day is to capture some energy savings. That concept, I still support. I like it. I read this, I think the Vice Mayor brought up, who was Optini and what are they trying to sell us? $25,000 to tell us that we will save energy by using photovoltaics? I certainly hope we get more than that for $25,000. And then I read on page one of their opening paragraph, a key feature of this program is it does not require upfront allocation of funds for project planning, site assessment, procurement activities, but it, they ask us for $25,000.
No, no, that's, it's not Optini who's asking. This is for town.
That's why I wanted, that's why I was trying to clarify.
This is not a free buy-in to this program. This is $25,000 for somebody to evaluate whether it's a good idea for us.
No, 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 I have to clarify. That's not what I, that's what I tried to just explain. The $25,000 is not going to Optini. It's going for us to hire a consultant on our staff to augment, and it already works part-time with us. We have to pay that person. This is not Optini, and it may not be $25,000. It could be $5,000. It's just, we don't have the work plan to support moving this project. This was an unplanned project. So if you may recall, we brought on Mr. John Draper, and he does some on-call project work. So what the second part, so that's why I want to make it real clear. The first part is moving forward with the evaluation. Second part is an allocation of up to $25,000, and that will allow us to hire, to work through RGS, which is where we work through Mr. Draper. He will do, in support of Graham, some of the staff work in managing the analysis, the evaluation, the testing, making sure that the assumptions are right, representing the town's interest in evaluating what Optini does in their next phase. So I just want to make sure that everybody's really clear on that. This is not, this $25,000 is not going to Optini.
Right. And so this is also for the fiscal year. So if we go to construction next summer, then this would also give him time to have the pre-bid meeting, the construction, pre-construction conference, you know, do all the paperwork for the staff reports. Optini's not going to be working for the town in terms of administrative work. So that's where John Draper comes in. It'd be, either it'd be me or, or John.
I get the distinction. But basically, if I understand it correctly, we're having to pay because we're talking about moving this, this project forward.
Right.
Otherwise, it would have been, we would have been allocating the funds in one, two, three, four years down the road in our CIP, as we got closer to being able to in-house all this prep. So what we're saying is, this new program of funding is available now.
Mm-hmm.
So we want to move forward now, but we don't have the capacity. So now we're paying somebody else to add the capacity.
Right.
To get us there. We're still not buying into the program. We're evaluating the program.
Mm-hmm.
And you just can't handle that in-house right now. So
Right.
We're paying somebody to do that for us.
Right. So in a few months, we'll have a request for proposal for you to review. We'll have a better assessment of, you know, how viable is it? What's the payback? And so John is supporting me essentially to help us through this process, to give you the information to make the decision. Optini is doing the research and all, and then, again, you'll get some proposals, and then you'll either can accept the proposals and award it or not. But yeah, this is something that we're going to do for a few years. It just is a really good opportunity, and it may not be here in a couple of years.
Well, my only concern is, and I would also assume that our 25, up to $25,000 would go toward this evaluation. In a couple of years, this system may be antiquated, given the technology of the industry. So I would hope and I would expect you to be evaluating as we go, that if we decide at some point, six months from now, and a few thousand dollars from now, this is not the right answer for us, we're not going to go through this whole process for a consultant to give us a big book of paper in 12 months to say, we recommend you don't move forward. You know, I'd like to have a close monitoring of evaluating this program, I guess is what I'm saying. I'm not convinced it's the be-all, end-all of the way we should proceed for the energy conservation, but I can see supporting, at least evaluating if it's, has merit.
Yeah, I was, I've been hesitant on, you know, solar panels and all, and worked on a project of panel, but what's been happening in industry is consolidation, and so that's created some opportunities as well. So that the industry has grown up, you might say. And so now we have a lot of those concerns and questions that we've had in the past three years ago or so are being answered and addressed within the industry. So I feel a lot more comfortable moving forward with this, this project than I did three years ago. Technology is always going to change. You know, the solar panels are going to be less expensive. One of the things about Optini is they've looked at so many of these that they know the tricks of the trade. They have that expertise to help us to select a good contractor, and they will evaluate the bids and say, you know, this isn't a good inducer, whatever, you know. So they, they have some expertise there that I don't have, which I would appreciate having on, for them to look at that industry-wide, you know, they've been down Santa Clara and other agencies. And we work with Marin and Sonoma, so those agencies will also cooperate in terms of getting the best bang for the buck and, you know, having some good evaluation from multiple agencies.
And at least some of this money would have been paid eventually. Your staff time, other potential consultant costs.
Correct.
It's not like this is completely dropped in our lap without any planning. We've, we're just accelerating the evaluation process.
Right. We did not, this project is in the capital improvement program, but unfunded in the future. We just want to move it into the current fiscal year budget.
The evaluation part of it, anyway, not the actual construction of, not yet, potentially.
Well, we would also like, yeah, if, with the award, we would ask to, you know, move forward with the construction in this fiscal year, but the finding, you know, we would have to pay for the contractor, and then we'd have the lease financing, and then that, you know, we'll talk about that when we get to that point.
Well, that, I guess that was my point. This is not, this just funds the evaluation. We have to still go through the whole process. If the evaluation is recommend, and we, as a council, say, let's do it, then we're really getting into the planning and cost.
Just like with the ESCO project. We had to pay Butler to do the solar, to do the lights, the air conditioning systems, the streetlights and stuff like that. But then we worked out the financing with the state where they wrote us a check, and then we pay them back every six months.
And also, correct, we would not move forward with the project and therefore put it in as a construction phase of your CIP until you make that determination and approval.
Okay. Got it. Any member of the public like to comment on this? Nope. I understand that. After checking with the public, I'll bring her back for discussion with the council. So Councilmember Dornbecker, do you have a comment?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I was wondering if Optini, by any chance, also has, you know, have they indicated any other technologies, like fuel cell technology, that they could also weigh, that, you know, or, or other technologies like photovoltaic that are coming along down the, down the highway? I mean, are they in a position where they could look at those other technologies?
I'm not real familiar. I went to two workshops with Optini and SEI. They did talk about other technologies, and I know the Apis sanitation district looked at wind and different things like that and did an evaluation. At this point, they're focused on the photovoltaics. I'd have to look to see what other areas they've, you know, studied. But with this, this program, essentially, they're really just focused on the photovoltaics at this time.
I see.
But we could, you know, look at different things. You know, we're doing the methane capture project. That was one that ranked pretty high on sustainability. So we can, you know, keep looking at different options for the, for the town.
Ask them if they have any recommendations on those as well. Okay, thank you.
So any further discussion by council, or is there any action, further discussion, comments?
I would make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 3063-12 with the one edit that has been made, stating and direct staff to allocate out to the applicable enterprise fund, the, the funding from the capital projects fund reserves for the town. Approving a memorandum of understanding with the Sustainable Energy and Economic Development Seed Fund Number One for Cooperative Purchasing of Renewable Energy and approving budget adjustment 2012-13-02 for $25,000 in funding for the townwide photovoltaic systems project CP-0006.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I didn't know if Councilmember Mueller was reaching for the microphone. Okay?
No, just going to...
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to our Town Hall Structural Strengthening Project. We have a couple resolutions related to this item as well. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'll try and be brief because these are continuation projects of prior direction. The first item is the report from the Financing Ad-Hoc Committee. The Financing Ad-Hoc Committee interviewed three different firms with three different approaches, an independent financial, a bank affiliated, and an investment bank affiliated. And with that, I will turn it over to the able ad hoc committee members, Vice Mayor Shilton and Richard Hall, to present their recommendation. I will point out, you do have the full detail proposal from the committee's recommendation on the dais for your review.
I'll invite...
We flipped a coin. You said you...
Vice Mayor to start at least.
Sure. I'll be brief, but what I wanted to highlight is if, if everybody can look on page two of the staff report, kind of in the middle, I don't think we ever got the boxes, PowerPoint, did we, Kathleen? My little boxes. What I want, kind of want to point out, because this staff report does it, is down in the, kind of the bottom third, it lists the three different entities that we interviewed. Columbia Capital, who is an independent financial advisor. KNN Advisors, which is either a financial advisor or they're a bank, depending on what it is you're transacting with them. And then on the far end of that spectrum, we interviewed Wolf Hansen and Company, who is simply an investment bank. And I bring this up for a couple of reasons. One is, is the, to, to go for the financing of the seismic retrofit of this building, we would, A, have to look at what types of financing we were interested in, and were appropriate and, and possible. And secondarily, decide how would we go about getting that financing. There are multiple ways to do that. It does seem like that the most appropriate way of financing the building is through, I would say this in general, is certificates of participation, which is how we finance the community center. It's a lease revenue, a lease revenue bond. Is that a correct statement to make? Yeah. And in that scenario, we would either be taking essentially lease revenue bonds out to the investment community, either through a competitive sale, basically an auction of those bonds, a private placement, so a single investor, let's say it's a very large mutual fund who has holdings in municipal bonds, says, I like this, this issuing, I want to buy all of it. Or instead of specifically doing it that way, you kind of go a third route, which is you finance it through a lease agreement with a bank. And I would put that in the way of, it's like going into, simplification, going to a bank and getting a loan like you do on your house. That is a simplification. But what, when we went through the process, probably spent between an hour and a hour and a half with each of the different groups. I think the one thing that we agreed on is all of them were very competent and could provide us with the outcome that we would like. One thing that we all acknowledge is that, and I'm not, I say this with no offense to myself or anyone else, we are not experts on municipal bond financing. And it is important that, that we, in my opinion, have someone who, of course, is that represents us and that can do so in an independent way. If you hear that word, you kind of know where I'm heading. So, and I'll give an example. And regulations have actually changed with Dodd-Frank. It used to be that you could have somebody who was your advisor, who also conveniently happened to be your underwriter. And they got to play both sides of, of the, of the table and could come to you and say, we got you this great deal, and it's the best deal out there. And the answer is, how do you, how do you know? Right? So the bottom line is, is that after some discussion, the ad hoc committee is recommending that we go with Columbia Capital. They are an independent financial advisor. They work with a lot of municipal placements, and they also provide financial advice that goes beyond just necessarily the one narrow financing that you were doing. And when I say that, we have two other bond issues outstanding. The flood wall is outstanding until 2018, and the community center until 20...twenty-seven, twenty, thirty years from now, or 25 years from now, whenever that is. There are opportunities at certain times where there's call provisions, that those could be refinanced. There are automatic refinancings already in the flood wall. So having somebody who could also advise us on those in an independent way, we think is, is the best route to go. We'll also point out that if we have a financial advisor, which I believe we should, there will also be a... will also be a company like Wolf Hansen most likely involved, who is the actual investment bank, who actually goes out with their sales force and talks to investors and says, we've got a highly rated company, not a company, but a town municipality that is not Stockton and is, is not Vallejo, but in fact has a very good story to tell, even though we're in California, and they feel confident they can do that. So we, we would suggest that the council approves the recommendation of Columbia Capital, and there will be some work to be done once they are selected, if they are selected, to make final determinations on the route. This is not making a determination on the, on the financing or to go forward, as we were kind of talking about before, but they can give us the full information and recommend how we go about that. We are looking at a timeframe, I, I believe we were talking about February of 2013, am I right Steve, of, of doing a, a ward of a potential design bill contract?
Earlier.
Okay. Under promise, never delivered. So these things would need to work in a fairly quick timeframe and staff and our, all of us on the council don't have the expertise to do that and a group like Columbia Capital does. Anything to add?
I, I would just make a couple more sort of generic comments about this. First of all, we're not talking about, it sounds like a big number, but we're not talking about an enormous number in the muni bond or in the municipal debt listings that, that this would cause anyone outside of probably this community in a heartburn. We're talking about a very small number, which means that we're going to have probably less attractiveness to those larger institutions that would love to have an investment in a municipality such as ours where we've got an outstanding credit rating. And so for that being the case, and given that the rates today are so low, this is a very opportune time for us to be doing this. And what we felt in talking with Columbia Capital and with all the, all three of the groups is that there is really not a better time for us to be taking this under advisement. We haven't pulled a trigger on anything, but we certainly think this is a really good opportunity for us to get very reasonable financing. We felt that in Columbia Capital, we have a partner who would be able to work with us not just on the transaction, but potentially and hopefully going long, going forward, should we decide or should we be interested in that. And I think Lewis's comment about the fact that it was an independent, really an independent individual or organization, rather than one that is related to a bank and/or related to investment bank for that matter, who might be sitting at the other side of the table, eating from both sides, if you will, was really something that we felt was very important. And certainly, they, they all proved competent and, and would be valuable partners, but this was, we believe, the best choice.
Questions about the presentation? Councilor Muller?
Uh, yes. So what's the process for actually final determination of the 10-year amortization versus the 15? Are you guys going to have more discussions and make that separately, come back to council for approval? Lewis is nodding his head, I guess that's a yes.
That's a yes.
And what about the wrapped versus the unwrapped scenario? Will that be also brought back as one of the same?
Are you referring to?
Wrapping the, the whole bond together with the community center debt versus, or have you already made that decision?
Well, that's, I, I would say we haven't made that decision, but it's not really feasible because the call provision is a 10-year call on the community center.
Okay.
So you can't refinance it.
We could, it would be, it would result in negative arbitrage and that would be paying on a higher interest.
Right, because that's what I looked at. I didn't see that there was any call at all, which is my final question. What about the calls on, on, is it, on the 10 or 15s? I mean, if we, money rains down from heaven and we want to like pay it off or?
We, we certainly would have that option to be able to put in a provision such that we could call back and repay those instruments if, if the, if you, if as you said, you know, we had our, our day in the sun.
Okay.
We would structure it as flexibly as we could as, as the town or as the enterprise, but that's part of what we're paying this financial advisor to do is to help us structure something, given that we are such a, you know, and they kept coming back to me, we have a fantastic credit score. This, this is a town that people want to be involved with, whether it's on the east coast or on the west coast. Yonville has got quite a name and I asked the question specifically, does that mean anything relative to the credit score? And the reality is, you know, when you see the name and you're out there trying to buy these issues, it is important. So we will have, we believe, a little more flexibility in the way we can structure this, but that's what our financial advisor is going to provide us, help us develop.
Okay, so one last, there was some discussion, but so when do you really think you could pull the trigger and actually get this done? Let's just say we really, there is a fiscal cliff or the bond market blows up. I mean, what, what was your timeframe again?
And I'll, I'll advocate to Steve on that answer, but we ask that question explicitly every time we interview these, these folks to see what the timing would be. And of course, you know, they've got different answers. We have a reality of bureaucracy and process, but Steve can probably color it for us.
We are working to ensure that we have financing secured in early January so that we can execute the contract. So that's our timeline would be issuing the debt in early January, and that's achievable. It's, it's a semi-aggressive schedule. It's one that allows us flexibility upfront to better understand the options, because I will point out, the interview selection really was focused on getting to know people and their ideas and how they might see. Now we're gonna, they're going to bring back to us A, B, C, D and things like that to look at. And then that will come back and then the council will make a firm decision, but we are probably looking at, depending on the method, and again, the method is still not determined. I mean, this was a, there could be a few things out there. I would see us either being in the market mid-December optimal or early second week in January are probably the, the two most likely dates.
And just to follow up on that, because that question was asked as, as Richard alluded to, and I was actually very surprised that in general, I think the answer was, you know, we don't see that the uncertainty on the political side and the quote unquote fiscal cliff is going to have a really big impact, you know? And if there was some other trigger in the market that would, that would rattle the bond markets, that would be different. But I think that the, the, almost the response was, in that scenario, there'll be a flight to quality and you're going to be a quality investment regardless of what happens in Washington or, or whatever it would be. So rates right now, depending on, I mean, we didn't, we didn't even get presented, I think staff did that, nothing over 15 years. I mean, that was the maximum. And most of what we looked at was 10, and you're talking about interest rates that are in the 2 percentage and 3 percent. I mean, it's, wow. I mean, it's low. I mean, when you consider how low we thought the community center really was when, when that was done in the, I think in the mid fours, and now it's in the low, low threes and the high twos.
It's 40 percent. It's basically 40 percent of what the rates are for the community center at this juncture.
Also point out, in the, in the concept of doing a financing, as, as Richard said, it may be small in the, in the municipal world, where sometimes you talk in the tens or hundreds of millions of dollars, or you could, you could get into billions. A financial advisor, this costs very little when you talk about basis points, even on $3 million add up, you know? And so just having that expertise, I think, is, is very valuable.
Other questions about the proposed advisor specifically?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you.
Now would be a time.
Thank you. So it, it, tonight, our option is to choose Columbia Capital and then they will advise us as to, you mentioned Wolf Hansen and Company, is that, was that just for an example or, or is that the company, the, the investment bankers that you believe that they will?
Wolf Hansen is an investment bank that is California-based that we actually interviewed.
Right.
And so they would be potentially, depending on their advice of, of the financial advisor, if we choose them, they might say, they'd be a great investment bank for us to court in a way.
So they have not made a recommendation?
They have not, no.
And that recommendation will come back before us?
Um, you know, I, I don't necessarily, I, I don't know that the choosing of the investment bank itself is something that we will, I don't think we'll do with that.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we have them.
Okay.
Is that right? I mean, that's what I, I don't want to do with that.
That would be my understanding. That would bog down the process.
I mean, when it really comes down to it, and I'm sure all these people hate, hate to hear me say this, this is a commodity product. I mean, it's a transactional product of, this is how it works, you go out there, there's not a lot of differentiation, they're trying to do. So if it's investment bank X, Y, or Z, as long as they can do the, what they're supposed to do.
Right.
You know, they're going to bid a basis point or two less and that's why they'll get the business.
And I apologize to the vice mayor, he had asked me to do a little flow chart and that got lost with the audit work this week. But, but basically, the financial advisor will run a lot of scenarios. I envision the ad hoc committee kind of selecting what they think would be the best options and then us bringing those before council with a recommendation is kind of how, in very general terms, how the process will work.
I don't want to see a whole lot of options, you guys will give me three maybe and your recommendation.
Narrow down, yes, yes.
We're going to give you option A and option B is not an option.
Okay. I can make a decision on that.
So a couple of questions I have, I'll try to form this one, because I find it very challenging to evaluate, given this document at the start of the meeting tonight, how we're supposed to decide if this is the appropriate recommendation. How are we supposed to decide that? I mean, I guess we can leave it up to your discretion and that, and I certainly value your proposal. I find it very challenging though to, if we're supposed to figure this out, that we had no time to look at their presentation. So maybe you could explain why we should be able to make that determination tonight. Then the other question I have to follow up, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that it says direct town manager to negotiate and execute a contract. I have no idea what this contract would cost us. $1,000, $100,000, $50,000? I don't know what we're signing ourselves up for, so maybe a little more explanation for why the process is working on such short notice and then what would it even cost us?
I think those are on page three.
I was going to say, yes. First of all, the process that the council selected was to ask the ad hoc committee to do that.
Totally understand that and I appreciate that process.
This is where they're at. The process is, in order for us to move forward, you know, first of all, Louis, vice mayor addressed, the financial advisor will be paid out of the transaction, so that, that is where. And council member Muller is correct, there was an outline of potential fees.
The underwriting fees and the cost of an, of issuance, depending on which one we pick is on page three in the bottom.
And what we would be doing is attempting to put a contract in place, subject to review. So the reason we're here tonight is, that's the timing, that's a timeline. If you'd like them to come back, make a formal presentation, that can be scheduled, but that's what our understanding of the council direction was, was that for the ad hoc committee to make that recommendation. And I do understand, you haven't, you don't have the benefit of sitting in the three interviews and.
Well, and I'm not challenging the recommendation, I'm, I'm questioning our abilities to fairly evaluate what's being asked of us tonight. I, the process, I have no problem with and I, and I, that's not what I'm saying.
Can I, can I answer, can I at least address the second question?
Absolutely.
I, I think the answer is that there's no money until something actually happens. It's, it's kind of like you don't pay your, you don't pay your mortgage broker anything until you have a mortgage. So if we don't have, if we don't have a transaction, then we don't pay them anything. So I don't think we're approving a budget, any budgetary expenditure to do this. We'll decide later whether we want to proceed with a certain type of financing, which has certain costs. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That is.
Yeah. So then you can, you can address the first part of this question.
Well, and I, maybe if I can just wade in on that, because it's, it's a very reasonable statement, Mayor, and, and there's a lot of information, dense and otherwise, and to sift through the proposals that we got and to meet with these individuals and to try to keep up with the fact that all of us on the town side interviewing these people don't have the breadth of experience and knowledge and day-to-day sort of combat gloves on going into these markets or understanding these issues, and I had never done that before, so this was a learning event for myself. But the challenge being that, well, time is presently on our side. We don't think, or at least the advisors, each of them, all three of them didn't believe there were any sentinel events that were going to cause the banks to change their interest rates, but that, you know, we felt that this was a good opportunity because we had finished the last interview on Friday to get this information to council. I, you know, if we don't make that decision tonight, which is perfectly, a perfectly reasonable item to, to agree to or come up with, then we table it for two weeks. And what we were trying to do, I believe, correct me when I'm wrong, is to get the information and our recommendation from the ad hoc committee, who was asked to provide that, again, notwithstanding that this data literally is fresh off the press, and to get it to you as early as you can so that we, you know, we could get it in front of the council so we could move on to the next step. That said, I mean, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with having all the proposals go out to the council and having it reviewed and talked about at the next meeting, and I think that's very reasonable to continue it.
Before we get into the full discussion about this, those are questions I wanted to ask, you've answered them and we'll continue the discussion as we move into this item a little further. So if there aren't any other questions about the presentation of the report, I'll invite public, if anyone would like to comment, which I see none. So let's continue the discussion part, and I appreciate council member Hall's point and I appreciate the answers to my questions, which would have been helpful for me personally if they were in the report, to understand there was no financial output for this step that we're being asked to make tonight. That makes a difference for me. And just hearing you evaluate where you, how you reached this recommendation helps. I'm not interested yet in breaking down the numbers of what's going to come back to us in six months after they look into this. I'm trying to evaluate why we should pick them as the financial advisor. So I guess I'm still at that rudimentary step of, having just been given this, not being able to evaluate at all, I had some apprehension, so. Is there other comment from other council?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I, I agree with you that I don't think that it would be a detriment to have two weeks for us to read through this and, you know, not that we don't, and we do highly value and trust your, the ad hoc committee's presentation and, and endorsement to do this. I think that it would make a lot of sense that we all read it and come back in two weeks and then be able to, to vote. And I too am happy to know that the, the financial commitment isn't, you know, hidden somewhere and that it's, you know, as you said. So I, I think I would feel more comfortable too to have time to read that.
Well, I mean, just in defense of the ad hoc committee, this was in our mailbox, I actually did have quite a few days to read it, so, I mean, did I get it and nobody else got it?
Well, I don't think so because I came and picked up my, my binder just yesterday and it wasn't in there then.
This was on the dais this evening. We, I don't want to nitpick about how long we've had to review it, other than the fact that I had a concern that, I didn't need to read every page of this. I do appreciate the fact that you guys can vet the proposals. I do and did feel like it warranted discussion about whether we were in a position to be able to say, yes, we all agree with that. I'll ask our ad hoc members again, clearly you recommend them, was there any choice in the matter? Or they clearly, because they are the independent advisor, like far and away, you're a recommendation? Or was there some question about, they have pros and cons? The second option is also a very reasonable option that was something you would have potentially brought forward.
Well, and now I'll just go through sort of the, the quick balance sheet. I mean, I, we met with the three groups and, I mean, I think sort of each of us laid out our pros and cons to each. You know, I think probably the, the one con, because we should get there, that this is not a group in California, so that, that may be the one, that would be the one limiting factor.
Not primarily. They have an office in.
That's correct, they do have an office in Beverly Hills, but I would say Northern California, let me rephrase that. That being said, they have done, if I recall correctly, three transactions over $30 million in these types of transactions in the last four to five years was that commentary.
In California.
In California, that, that's what I meant to say. So they've done more than that historic, yeah, billions, but that, that was the one in Northern California. What I would also say is that, you know, the, the one that probably has the most, the strength of the relationship with the town, KNN, in general, was the one that I, I think that I was least impressed by. And they've done, they did the. And they've done, they did the community center financing. So, you know, that said, you know, I would say that the second group, which is out of San Francisco, which is the investment bank, would have been probably the second, would have been the second group we'd have gone with. And they've got a breadth of experience. But again, KNN and Wolf Hansen both could sit at the table and eat from both sides and there's, there's a potential for that conflict. Whereas with the third party, and let's be clear, we only talk to three parties. There are hundreds, if not several hundreds of these types of organizations. I mean, are these the, are these the three that, that we should have chosen for that small grouping? I think we, I think we went out to three very qualified competent financial advisors or financial advisor firms and what you got back from us was sort of that balance sheet, what, what do we think is the most important part of their relationship with us and what do we think is, you know, meaningful but not necessarily as important? And so, you know, I think that in general, in total, this, the Columbia Capital was the group that we felt was going to give us the most independent advice, was going to partner with us to have a successful offering and recognize that there was not going to be a conflict at the end of the day, trying to get their, their related party to either underwrite or support the transaction that we were trying to deal with. That said, we only spoke to three. We could have spoken to 15.
So, what was the process for evaluating them as the best option as an independent advisor? I mean, was there feedback from other sources that said, yes, these are, this is a good firm or you can't go wrong or whatever?
Specifically, I wouldn't say that we, you know, we got on the phone with calls and references. I think because this is a commodity-based type transaction, you look at the number of transactions, who they've got relationships with. I mean, it's, I think it's part of the package that they include, who they've done these types of transactions with. You know, everyone who came in here told us the same thing. It's a very, it's a very common thing that we're doing and everyone gave us basically the same, I'll use the phrase song and dance. Ultimately, when you walk away from a relationship or from an interview like that, you're trying to gauge whether or not you can have a relationship with this individual and that you trust them to be not unlike your mortgage broker on the other side. They're going to do what they can to take care of you. And I think we walked away with that from Columbia Capital more so than the other, than the other firms.
Well, and I would, I think I go back to my initial statement. All three totally competent. If honestly, if we said we were going to choose any of the three, I'm not undervaluing our wonderful evaluations, but they were, they would all be able to do the job fine. And KNN is a, is a financial advisor who happens to have years ago been purchased by Zion's National Bank. And back in the olden days, which is 2008, they were your financial advisor, they were your underwriter, they had a bank, they would do it all. Actually, is, did Zion's do the loan for the, I mean, the loan for the, for the flood wall is with Zion's National Bank? So, you go to that scenario of it simply came down to not, do they have the capability, technical ability, the comfort level with, they're a financial advisor, but there's that, you know, there's always that kind of back thing. I can say, I didn't notice that we got this today or when we got it because we got it several weeks ago or whatever. I think the ad hoc committee did. So, and there's two more of these if, for the other firms too, that you could certainly see. But they kind of all say the same thing. I mean, it's, I mean, that's the hard part, you get into the feel part of it.
So, the driving factor in your decision was the independence?
Yes.
That it all, this comes down to number crunching from there and everyone is qualified to number crunch?
Yeah. The bond issuance goes out on a, on a report to everyone who's interested in buying muni bonds. There's no, there's no secret sauce. Everyone has access to it. It's, it's, you know, can you cobble together something that's, that's consistent?
Okay. Well, certainly in that, this discussion is helping me with the comfort level since we weren't, and I'm not asking to redo your ad hoc work. That's not my intention. But having so little time to evaluate what you did do was making me uncomfortable. So, any other comments from Councilmember Moeller or Dornbecker on this?
I'm very comfortable. I totally agree that as long as they feel like they're independent, I think Dodd-Frank does that. You know, I would imagine that all three are fiduciaries. So, I mean, we're kind of covered.
Yeah. Dodd-Frank does that, but then they, they sit at the table and they say, we can be your financial advisor, but then we can also change if we need to and be your underwriter.
We won't actually sign the document. We'll just flip when we need to.
But they all are fiduciaries, right? So, we're basically
In certain ways, yes.
Yes, correct, in one fashion or another.
So, to me, that makes me very comfortable. So, I, you know, I'm focusing on how long we have to borrow this money and can we pay it back? And I want, don't want the bond market to blow up before we get there. So, those are my concerns. So, I'm ready to go.
That is, that is a valid concern too about the risk of delaying this initial decision that will then put off the next decision and then there may be a different climate. I know that we're in a very short window here with elections in November and fiscal uncertainty December 31st potentially, that if we, it could be a matter of weeks if we fall behind that, that the scenario could change.
They're printing money as fast as they can. We better
Okay. Any further discussion or potential action on the item?
I'm willing to make a motion if I can. I guess it's resolution number 3065-12. Nope, wrong one. Hold on.
That's the one I was on too.
3064.
Dash 12.
Okay.
You will need to insert the name. I do think it's worth pointing out because the mayor brought up a very valid point. This particular staff report was a placeholder and written prior to the conclusion of the interviews because they hadn't finished. So, I think you, I'm just watching and interacting and watching the council and I do think the unique circumstance here is the qualitative analysis that's normally in there is not in there because that hadn't, that hadn't come out of the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, which was presented on Monday. So, point for us to take when we look at certain things because the staff report's very lean, doesn't say a whole lot about any of them because the recommendation hadn't been made at the time the staff report was written. So, just a footnote to try to help understand what that environment is for everybody.
So, the motion made inserting Columbia Capital in the blanks for
More importantly, to approve resolution 3064-12, authorizing selection of financial advisor firm to secure debt financing for the design build of Yonville Town Hall Structural Strengthening Project CF-0001 with the insertion of Columbia Capital and two places on page one.
I'll second.
Oh, in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we got through that one. Let's move on to B2, authorizing release of request for qualifications for the design build of Yonville Town Hall Structural Strengthening Project.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight before you is the authorization, request for authorization to issue the request for a qualifications-based proposal for the design build of the Town Hall Structural Strengthening Projects, which we just talked about moving forward with the financing. As you know, previously the council had given direction to consider design build. Staff has worked with the town attorney's office and the pound management and we've worked collaboratively to develop a specific document that reflects appropriately the project, which is our anticipation of what we want when we're done and in concert with California Public Contracting Code because there's a specific provision to allow for design build. So, I'm, I can go into a ton of detail or very little, but what we're asking for tonight is the approval of the document, Oliver Dibble, with pound management's here. And what you see is the scope and the outline and we go out to bid and we start getting responses to the proposal. The advantage of design build is we're basically saying, here's what we believe the value of the building should be and we're going to be able to evaluate those proposals on a qualitative basis and not simply go after low bid. You'll actually see in the document an evaluation process score sheet and this will, you've heard from the ad hoc financing committee on the work that they've been doing and now this project will ship from them, once they select the financing recommendations and bring some of that back. It will ship to the project committee consisting of council members Moeller and Dornbecker, who will be involved along with myself, the public works director and pound management in the screening and evaluation, hopefully of the top three or four firms in an interview process. So, with that, I'm, you've got a three-inch document that represents the request for qualifications-based proposal. It has been heavily vetted by the town attorney's office, myself. You've seen what we call the bridging documents, which you've all seen before. Those are all the historical documents about what we're trying to achieve with the structural strengthening, a little bit of the anticipated building layout and a narrative to explain that this is what we expect to get when we're done. So, with that, Oliver is here, Graham, Arnold and myself are prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, council? Yes, Councilmember Moeller.
I have one really major concern and I would, I'll totally let you know, I'm not an expert, but when I saw that you wanted this big thing back, which I thoroughly read by November the 7th, I, this just doesn't pass the smile test of me. Just, there's a lot of stuff that somebody has to do in here to give us what we need and we're talking about a month. I mean, convince me I'm like totally off base here, but it's just like, there's no way.
First of all, I'll never convince any of you you're totally off base. We've vetted this, what looks like a very detailed package, Councilmember Moeller. Part of it is, is because we're giving them the background material, we're giving them the, you know, a good half of this document consists of the format with which the contract will be negotiated. And part of that is to make sure that they're understanding the nature of the contract. The first 15 pages is really the most critical part of the evaluation and we have preliminarily started putting this in front of some of the local builders. So, I'm going to, I'm going to say optimistically, you know, that's
So, how many builders have seen it? How long have they had a chance to kind of look at it? Because my assumption is we'll prove it, maybe it goes out tomorrow, but if a lot of builders have already taken time and really started digesting all this, then my comment doesn't really apply.
We've had some. I have to say, you know, we can't officially post it in all the, the posting places and depository until you all have said yes. So, we have been letting people know, this is out, this is coming, this is our objective. There seems to be reasonable interest and that's about all I can say at this point in terms of what we anticipate. You know, this is not an extremely large-scale project as far as construction goes. It's incredibly significant to us because of the impact. I don't know. Oliver, do you have any comments on your thoughts of?
Well, I want to allow our questions of staff and then I'll invite him to come up once we finish with you, if I may. So, I may. So, if you could just hold, hold that thought in case we have other questions that we propose to our staff and then we'll have you come up. Did you have any further comments, Steve, on that or Councilmember Moeller, have any other questions along those lines?
Nope, pretty simple.
Any other questions?
This is John Scher.
Town staff? Okay, so, as part of the opening this to the public, I'll invite our consultant to come up and answer that question and any others that might come up with council as you're giving us your version of this. So, now would be a good time.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Oliver Dibble. I've, I think been up here a couple of times on this project. I work for pound management and I was, I worked with Steve and Graham and the attorneys to develop the RFQP. With regard to the length of time for response, as Steve has said, a lot of the stuff in here is explanatory. We often, and I come from a contracting background, we often respond to these in a two-week cycle. It's, it's not uncommon at all for that to happen. We're, as Steve said, giving them most of the information that they need. What we're looking for from them is an analysis of our proposed design, a number that supports our number and a whole ton of information on what type of firm they are and why they would be a good combination fit to provide the service. At that point, when we receive all that information, there's a pretty stringent point system that's in the RFQP and we'll do a numeric, a metric, a metric analysis and score them. We'll all individually score them and then we'll score them as a group, as, as an average. And the numbers will tell you where, how we can narrow down to making a final decision. I don't think, the scores will not be published, but the, but the rankings will be when we get to the end of it. So, any other questions?
I'll, I'll start with one and how do you plan to integrate our ad hoc committee into that process that you were just describing?
I suspect that I will end up doing the heavy lifting and getting it to, to the committee meeting as quickly as possible for analysis and then a meeting to make an overall discussion. We'll get the, we'll get the bids. I've already started spreadsheeting the scoring, so that won't be that hard to do. And then we'll distribute the proposals to the ad hoc committee and each one of them will, will fill in the matrix.
So, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there, but do you, do you present your ranked proposals to our ad hoc committee? Prior to that, they're evaluating with you all that?
Independent.
That's what, I was just unclear on that part. Okay.
And then when we come together, each one of us will have a matrix and we'll start having a roundtable discussion.
Got it.
Oftentimes, what happens is you get, we would like to see five. That would be good. If we get more, that's even better. If we get less, it's harder to, it's harder to, to make a final judgment. But five is a good number. And oftentimes, one or maybe two will be outstandingly, yeah, we don't want to spend a lot of time with this. And then the other ones, I mean, this, this is a sieve process like you said before. But it's a freedom that we have under the, under the public bidding, under the public bidding law in the, in design build that we don't have in the other forms of contract. So, it's a positive thing.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Hall, no?
Well, just a, so I'm going through this, is it section six, the review and award? Is that where you do, is that where you've, the basis for the scoring?
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, I
Page 12.
Yes, page 12, thank you. I guess, you know, one of the questions that, that comes to mind is, you know, anytime I've ever seen or been involved in a construction project, you know, I think part four is, is almost laughable, price and commitment to a project budget. I mean, it always seems like there is some step up. I mean, how, and I didn't, I confess, I don't necessarily know that I've caught in here. Is there a way to constrain that or are we going to go through the change order process like you do in any construction project?
We've given them, we've given them a basis on which to decide that the budget that we have is acceptable.
Because what we're talking about is you've obviously just sat here and listened, you know, we are going to be constrained by that budget and we will not be able to move beyond it and I, please.
And Councilmember Hall, you're correct. The total budget will have a contingency and there is a contract change order in a very delineated way in the proposed contract to deal with contract change orders for something that's, comes up that hasn't been addressed. And there are certain things that the town is keeping in the project budget that we're going to do ourself and not have the contractor, related to things like acquisition of the modular, coordinating the moving and IT relocation. So, the project budget will still be a bit higher than the award for the construction because of those elements and then a contingency. So, you're absolutely correct. There is a potential that we may pay more and their approach to their budgeting and how they've looked at things will be part of that evaluation.
So, then I guess my, my following question to that is, is this, is this going to be presented as a bid not to exceed?
No, it will be a lump sum. It will be a lump sum design build contract.
Which means that I write the check regardless and then if they change order me out because there's something that's not in the there's something that's not in this contract?
Well, I think...
The strength of this document.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, if you look in the document, we've identified it at a base price of 2.2 million for the scope of work that is being projected. There is a contingency, there is a legitimate change order process, and they do have to follow and document all that. And it's not, it's a very tighter process for obvious reasons, that we believe that this will achieve a better result than we achieved most recently with our community center project.
The interesting thing, I think, about the design-build process is that the group, the responder, is responsible for the design and the build. They can't point their finger at the architect and say, "You didn't draw that."
Right, and we all, I think we, you may have presented that last time, we all agreed that was the route to go.
Yeah.
And conversely, you know, if they made a mistake in the quantity, then we will look at that. A quantity error could be legitimate, but in most cases, when they're responsible for the process and the various things, it's up to them. You know, their real analysis is going to be, does that 2.2 million reasonable for what they need, and does it give them an acceptable profit on the project?
Right, okay, thank you.
Questions, Vice Mayor?
I just want to follow up on that. Maybe the town attorney can, can help me on this, too. When it came to the community center, notwithstanding the issues that we see today, the change orders that we had were, in general, I think, were somewhat predictable and fairly minor. Our contingency budget wasn't gigantic, and within a normal sphere of what should have happened, that was sufficient. When, I would say, two-thirds of the change orders were Old Town Hall, oh, I'm sorry, Old Community Hall, and it was just a thing of, when you take off the skin and then you see what's underneath it, I, how in this structure, and I know we talked about it a little last time, but how in this structure, when you take the skin off of an 82-year-old building, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, you know, you gave us this background information and we didn't," none of us were knew that there was X back there. How's that going to work, that it's not, that happens halfway through and we need another half a million dollars, or we just can't finish this project? How does that work?
Each change that's presented will have to be evaluated by us, by their design team, and by the town. The evaluation process will, will answer some of those questions. We've been pretty thorough, I think, in our analysis of the building. It's not a large building. It's built in a normal way for its time. We're not really, we're not really, we're building within the building.
Right.
So it's a little bit different than opening it up and having to deal with structure. There is no structure. We're replacing it, the structure. So that helps a lot. I think that there will be things that, there certainly will be things that come up, but we believe we've addressed them in the basis of the design. For example, the electrical system, that there's a, there's a bunch of risk in the electrical system. We're replacing it. We're, I mean, it's not worth keeping. It's, when you poke your head up and you see, you know, a rat's nest of wires, you know that that's a bad thing, and so we're just going to cut it out and start over again. And we can do that because we're removing all the interior stuff to build the interior frame, so we can rewire the building pretty effectively, and that's how we've, that's how we've laid it out here.
So you feel that the, there's the risk there, obviously, in any project?
Yep.
That legitimate things occur, and you feel like that's been minimized?
We feel like, we feel like we've spent a lot of time thinking about what those risks are, and we also feel that the risks that we've missed, because we've certainly missed something, will be able to be managed, and we have a method to manage them, so.
Councilmember Dornbecker, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I'll invite the council to continue and finalize discussion and potential action. Is there any additional discussion within council? If not, is there action?
Well, back to my original comment, I mean, so I heard we'd like to get five by this date if we, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of background that's kind of gone on a little bit, you know, to the last point. Do we think we're going to get five? I mean, I know that everyone's kind of dismissing this giant document as just background, but somebody's still got to read it, you know, and understand it, so it means...
What, my response to that is, if we find out by our deadline we have zero respondents, then we know that we need to extend the deadline. If we don't meet the threshold of what we consider adequate response, we can extend the deadline. I mean, if we get one and we're not comfortable with one, we don't have to accept that one on its face. This is the expected schedule. If our experts are telling us what actually will happen, and that we should get a healthy pool from which the ad hoc committee can help select, then we move on this timeline. Otherwise, we have the ability to change that.
And I will point out echoing what the mayor is saying. If we're not happy with the bid responses, the bid, the bid document allows us to reject any and all bids and reissue or restart. And, you know, we've had to do that on a few projects where we weren't happy with the responses, or we felt that the numbers did not add up. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to tell you that, whoa, we're competent, because we've had a few recent projects where the numbers of respondents exceeded expectations, and a few that we thought, we do know that we're letting the business, the contracting community know that there's this project. Most recently, we just issued, reissued our striping thing, as you know, that didn't work so well. The good news is, it did work better on the last one, and the numbers came in such that you weren't even going to have to see it, because it's within Ramanai's ability to do within the budget. But we had to go back and redo it.
Right.
And do some stuff. So I feel reasonable. I mean, will we get five? Will we get four? I don't know.
Okay, Councilmember Hall?
Okay, so this is just a soft date, and we can just go with it and make changes?
It's an intended hard date, and we'll evaluate as we need to. Councilmember Hall?
Well, just to remind members of the town council, I mean, it is a five-week out date, because once you approve this this evening, it hits the streets tomorrow, and October has a longer extra week in it. But it is, I mean, that date can always be adjusted. If feedback is coming in from the potential contractors and design-build companies, they can always say, you know, "We're going to need some more time," and we would bring that back to the town council by, we would even be able to bring it by your second meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mark. I guess one question I have, just if I may, and that is, you know, all this is being done under the pretense that we're going to be able to issue some form of debt so that we can pay for all of this, notwithstanding, I mean, stranger things have happened. What if we get into this commitment? I guess we can always just say, "Well, we never had the funds to fund the project, so we're going to..."
Good question, and let me clarify, state law does not let me sign a contract that I cannot fund.
That was my understanding.
So in this particular...
Why do they do it all the time?
That's an interesting nuance that I won't go into. But the reason, there are three things that are trying to drive our schedule. One is, as you know, we have the parallel track between the design and the construction and selection going out while we're working to get the finance. Part of our timeline is driven by our wanting to be a very good neighbor for Yountville Elementary School, which means we want to be under construction in mid-June. Now, you could say, "Oh, well, wait." Well, no, it's a design build, so they need enough time to do the final design elements while they're going in. So they've got to be able to be working on it in the, you know, late February into March, April, ordering all their supplies, materials. So that's what we're really at. But short answer is, we've given ourselves under this process, hopefully through January 31st, to conclude all of the contract negotiations, and that will, you know, we're optimistic that that will, our funding will be secured. If our funding is secured earlier than that, then I can expedite signing a contract, provided that we've reached a stage with a selected design-build team.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion with council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Do you anticipate that the funding will be in place by January 31st?
Yes, I do.
I'm comfortable with approving this.
Then, is there any action to be had? Is there a motion to be had?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3065-12, authorizing release of requests for qualifications-based proposals, RQP, to the design-build of Yountville Town Hall Structural Strengthening Project CF-0001.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
All right.
Moving on to C, paperless agenda implementation. Let's try to move right into this.
We will, and one of the first things, as you noticed, tonight's...
Thank you very much.
Tonight's theme has a lot of accomplishing projects that are listed on your strategic plan initiative, and one of those also happened to be the paperless agenda process. So tonight, Julie Valdea is going to present to you a recommendation. This is an initiative that you've asked us to work on and bring to you. So with that, she will present a report and a recommendation for a policy to move forward to implement this.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, Mayor and council, as you know, we have before you tonight a resolution to adopt the iPad tablet policy, and we also wanted to highlight where we're at, where we've, what we've done so far for Phase 1 of this implementation process. As you may recall, this, this was approved in the adopted budget for this fiscal year for 1213, and it is also in line with the town council's strategic plans and objectives. Right now, we are also in the process of upgrading our Granicus server to implement the, it's an app called iLegislate. It will actually push, push the agenda through to the iPad, and then we can, it's a streamlined process as far as being able to upload the agenda, which Michelle will do, and I am also speaking on behalf of Michelle, who is absent. So she will, she will then upload the, the agenda through Granicus and push it out to this iLegislate app, which, which is one of many apps available to use for annotation purposes. We're really excited, and we are really learning. I mean, Michelle and I are the first two to have purchased iPads right now. We are downloading the apps, learning how to use them, and, and it's amazingly easy thus far. We do have a long way to go as far as our comfort level to be able to roll it out and train you all. We have established the policy based on a lot of research we've done by other cities, by our own policy that we have in place right now with our, in our personnel rules, our self, or, excuse me, our electronic email policy. So we've tried to incorporate everything together, covering the basis for potential of growth as well, because technology changes so quickly. So right now, we have, we have, the purpose, obviously, is to go paperless. We are, we will be eliminating the process of preparing the big binders that you all carry along with you, the staff time, the copy costs. It will be eliminated. At this point, it's hard to say what the actual return on investment would be, because initially, we based it on rolling it out to all of the council boards and commissions. Right now, we're just focusing on management team and council. But there will be a cost recovery, no doubt. Right now, the implementation portion of it, we would be purchasing the devices, rolling them out to you all. We want you to be comfortable with them. We want you to use them. We want you to, to love them. We want you to, to be able to feel comfortable, because essentially, you will be doing your notations on these devices. You will be able to take them with you to your other meetings. You will be able to take them with you everywhere, because essentially, another part of the policies, they will be yours. They will be doled out to you based on the stipend. They will be a stipend approach, so that they will be yours. There will be no worries of commingling of town use versus private use. They would be subject to the Public Records Act if that was requested, but they would be essentially yours. They have, we have outlined the requirements, we have outlined our ideal standard of tablet. We feel that our preference is the iPad, based on the ease of use, the compatibility with so many applications that are out there, and it's just really a great tool. So that would be our town standard. We would like to, well, we are recommending purchasing the highest gigabyte of memory for this device, simply because you cannot add memory to them. What you buy is what you get. You cannot insert a SIM card. At this point, who knows what the future will hold, but, so we're recommending going with that. We would require that each individual person obtain a cellular plan. These, some, you can buy the devices without a cellular plan attached, but you can only use them where you have Wi-Fi capabilities. If you have a cellular plan, you do not, you are not bound to a contract, you do not have to use it, but you have the ability to use it should you be at a conference or somewhere where you need to access the Internet for business purposes or personal purposes. You would have the ability to enable that contract. So the, the devices that we're recommending purchasing will already be enabled for that. We're also excited to see how, how this, this will eventually incorporate with our document management system. You know, we're moving to the electronic document storage, and so at some, you know, we're working with SciTech to explore different options as far as how this can be integrated with that, with different programs. One advantage, disadvantage that the town of Yountville has is, does, we do not have the ability, we do not currently have, like, Laserfish or, or a different document imaging system that will automatically work with the pad, with the iPad or the device, to store the information. We, you know, and, but we don't think that that would, is far off. I mean, we believe that at some point, that the software will be out there, the ability will be able to, for all these devices to talk together. We're very excited about it. We're very, we're very anxious to get it rolling. I mean, we are, Michelle and I will be currently doing, using the devices at our meeting, we're going to try to use them at our meetings, and then roll them out to you guys as soon as we can, just so you can get comfortable. But we do expect to roll the project out by February of 2013. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions about, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
I know quite a few county supervisors who use them, and then there are quite a few other people, and as I've talked to them, the major complaint seems to be that there is no split screen available. Has that changed?
Not that I'm aware of.
So you can't look at the agenda and also look at an item on the agenda?
Well, my understanding is, it really depends on what applications they're using. I don't know what they're using. What, what we will be doing is, my understanding is, that we'll have the application, that we'll actually have the agenda, and you can, you would be able to click on the, the staff report or the background information of that. As far as the split screen goes, I, I'm not aware of that. I had not heard that complaint. I did go to a conference just two weeks ago with Michelle, and I really didn't hear any, anything like that, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So we would definitely look into it if it was an issue.
And then as a question about the stipend...
Yes.
...piece of that. So then, that would come to us as income?
It would come to you.
And we would be responsible for paying income tax on that?
Yes, you would.
And also, on the cellular plan that we would be required to have?
Yes.
We would be, we would have to pay that ourselves?
Yes, you would, but let me just clarify that it is your, the requirement is that the device is enabled with that function. It's not you, it is your discretion whether you choose to activate the plan or not. Okay? So my recommendation is that you do, but you do not have to. But the device would be enabled to do that, because there are selections of the device that you can purchase that don't have that feature. So we're purchasing it with the feature of it just in case you should need it. For instance, if this did not have the cellular capability, I could not be driving to a conference or something and looking and surfing. I could not be driving to a conference or something and looking and surfing, pulling up agendas. Not that I would be driving. I would be the passenger.
As a passenger.
Absolutely. But you couldn't do that.
But otherwise, she'd be violating the policy.
And I wouldn't want to do that. I didn't mean as a passenger. But you would not be able to use the device as a passenger in a vehicle or somewhere that there was no Wi-Fi. You would I mean, you could read what you have already uploaded into the device, but you couldn't go beyond that.
But they But we will be responsible for that cost?
Yes, you will. And generally, the I don't want to quote the cost, but they're anywhere from $15 to $50 per month, depending on the amount of storage that you choose to sign up for. And there are two carriers that do this. It's just AT&amp;T and Verizon thus far. So you would have to select one of those. And you are not bound to that, though. You can If you think you only need it for a month, you may cancel it after a month.
But I could add it to my home plan.
Yes. That's what I did. I added it to my personal cellphone plan.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mm-hmm.
Vice Mayor?
I guess that You just sort of brought this up a little bit of the, quote, requirement versus I mean, you have said you're not required to use an iPad. So I guess my issue here And I have an iPad that is a non-cellular iPad, because it is somewhat It was quite a bit cheaper. And I don't want to pay the $35 a month, whatever it was, because I have it on my phone. A $975 stipend, which I've read is correct, is a one-time purchase.
Yes.
The suggested iPad is $930 or so.
Yes.
Depending on what your situation is and what your tax rate is, you know, this program could theoretically cost a council member
$500 bucks.
$500, $400, $300 in taxes, because all of the money is being spent on the iPad. So I That's the You're kind of furrowing your brow at me. But if you look at the iPads that are the 16 gig, because I went on Apple today, and they're like $600 with the 3G to 4G, then I could see that ratio, but
Then we could look at that.
And I guess I get the same thing is if you believe the usability And I've taken my iPad to NCTPA meetings. Their Wi-Fi there is not good. I think it'll be good in the new building. But it is harder to use in that scenario. So I understand why it would be great to have 4G on there. But I don't have it on my iPad, because it is costly.
Right.
So I guess my concern is to implement a program First of all, I would not want it to be a financial burden for folks to do that. And I guess that goes to the question of, is it legitimate to say, hey, you know what, I think I can survive on a 32-gigabyte iPad? And that saves them? I mean, what are you guys thinking on this?
We're struggling on that, to be honest. We don't have enough history with knowing how much stuff you guys are going to put on the device. So that's our challenge for memory. I don't have a problem with recommending we drop to the 32 for the two-year period. And if
Which is definitely an option that we have further explored since this came out to you.
Because that unit price
It's really I mean, this is the first phase. Like Steve just said, we don't know how much you're going to be storing in there. I mean, if you are going to be saving your packets and these files, I mean, it's going to take up space. The large maps, the different things, they're big. So And the fact that you cannot just slip in a chip and add some more memory is the issue. That was the driving force behind the bigger side.
I totally understand that. My concern is if I just look at it and say, hey, we're going to implement this deal. And by the way, it's going to cost you personally money to do it.
Well, the other option
And I know the city of Napa, I just saw, I think that theirs was a $1,400 stipend, or I forget what it was. And again, I'm not arguing that I want a bigger stipend. I guess the question goes to that flexibility of fitting that within the reality of
Well, that's something we can definitely discuss. I know the city of Napa did do a completely different approach than we're doing. They actually increased the monthly council stipend.
Yeah, their charter.
Their charter.
Yeah.
But to your point, if you all are feeling that the $975 is not the right amount and it needs to be $1,200, that can be changed. I mean, we came in very conservative.
Well, I guess the other thing I'm feeling is, do we need to purchase the most expensive iPad? I mean, that's my other
And we'll discuss that as we get through
So that's
Questions of the staff report.
That's the You know, I think that was the That was the main question I had about that was is making sure that people aren't financially burdened.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think I read that you're expecting that these are going to be replaced every three years?
Well, that is That is the industry standard that we have. But we've also written it in there that it's at the town manager's discretion as well. So
Because it could be more often than that in some cases when
It could be.
Elections occur. You're going to be replacing them for new council members.
That is a factor.
Correct. A new council member coming on, if they were in that, would obviously start and their clock would run. You know, we do have the advantage A unique advantage that all of you will be the council for the next two years. So we know that the investment is going to be there for two years. So I mean, I'm not And that's also why, when we look at some of this being a little bit of a personal There is a personal benefit that we all can get. And, you know, we're not naive, nor is that unreasonable, that you have some personal benefit out of it. But
It's the reason why I don't sleep at night, because this darn thing is plaguing me. I have to keep looking at it. Um, okay. So benefit is your word, not mine. That was my point going to cost recovery. I mean, you will eventually Or we, as a community, would eventually get it by using these devices and not having the amount of paper.
Yes. We pay an extravagant amount of copy costs and toner
Well, and there's
and supplies and staff time.
There's staff time, and effort.
Yeah.
And I get that. Did you do evaluation of other vendors of different types of devices? I know you went Apple, and I mean, I
We did. I mean, well, we did Mostly used within all of local government are Apple devices. I know the city of American Canyon has one council member that preferred a Samsung device. And it does seem to work okay. But they You know, the comfort level of use is with the Apple device, the reliability. It's just a An easy device to use that works well with Without a lot of staff time beyond the initial training, that we have to invest in it. You know, if you bring a different device that isn't unfamiliar to us, you know, you would more or less be responsible of showing us what needs to do. We can direct you to the correct app that you need. But we would not be able to support them. I mean, with the iPad as well, I mean, I believe, and I have spoken with our IT contractor, that the support would be minimal from them. I mean, it would be virtually nothing to set them up. We would be doing the setup. So the cost there is minimal. With the other devices, I can't really speak for
What I will point out, the policy allows for that. So if a person wants to bring to me a different solution that they like and it meets our needs
And my question is, do we really go and evaluate the other devices and what their full compendium of options were?
We did not spend a lot of time going to the other devices. We did listserv surveys, multiple conferences we've attended. And this is the tablet of choice. So that's where we went with it.
Microsoft has a very recent product that has no I'm going to say it's on the market now, maybe 90 days. So this meant But it doesn't have any real live data use.
No users?
Right now, this is the And we are writing it this way, because I You know, I made very clear that it's You know, Apple, right now, the iPad is a standard industry tool. That may not be the case two years, three years from now.
As we know, it changes so rapidly. We left it open so where that we could make the change as technology changes. I mean, it's just inevitable.
Blackberry used to be the favorite technology for business, for phones.
So just very briefly about, you know, the stipend and the I'm assuming that the difference between the price that's quoted, the $931 and the $975, if I remember those numbers correctly, is
The difference would be for accessories.
Apps.
Yeah, apps, accessories, a cover.
Got it. Perfect. iTunes accounts?
You would be required to create an iTunes account. You would need to activate that with your personal credit card. It would not cost you anything to activate it. But you would need it to correspond with your iPad. I mean, you would have to have it to download the apps. So many apps are free. The ones that we're using right now, testing, are $9.99. There's two of them. So it's been $20 that we've paid. There's free apps. So, you know And as we grow through this, we will be exploring different apps and different, you know, things. I mean, it's just constantly changing.
So my question about the iTunes account is maybe a little different than the direction you were going. And that is, having already Already having an iTunes account, is it your analysis that says that one should create an independent iTunes account for your Whatever you want to call it, your position's iPad? Or should you be using the same one? I mean, does it
I believe the same one. I don't believe that there is There is a need to create a separate one.
Unless you want to keep your stuff independent.
But I would echo that. This is your iPad. This is So your personal iTunes account, you're just activating another device on the account. Where the town ownership of stuff comes in Also, basically comes in with the messaging and the content, which is actually owned on our server.
Exactly. Rather different than your email.
Now, each of you have You have a home computer. Some of you have a laptop. Some of you have a phone. And some of you would now have an iPad. You're getting your messages on multiple of those.
And they're already subject to the Public Records Act.
Correct. And alls we're doing is adding So that's why I would say, you don't need to go out and open up a separate iTunes account for your, quote Because again, it's going to be your iPad. The expectation is that you're given a stipend to contribute towards the cost of supporting that iPad to do the work that we're asking you to do with it. That's the nature of a stipend.
Last question, for me at least. Went on site then in town property. Are we then going to be eligible to use the town wireless?
Yes.
We will give you the password.
Yes.
Wireless.
We have We do. The idea, though, is that I mean, you can definitely use the Wi-Fi. But in a typical scenario, we are believing that you will be at home. You'll say We'll say, okay, here's the agenda. We'll push it out to you. You will have already uploaded it into your iPad. So you wouldn't necessarily have to have the Wi-Fi here. I mean, unless you wanted to search for something else or upload a different document. So it could go either way.
And wouldn't that create a challenge or a host of issues that I'm sure they're dealing with in the public environment these days? And that is people who are not paying attention to the meeting and are busy surfing the Internet.
Well, we Yes. Yes. And we would hope that
I'll watch you.
Yeah, don't watch me.
That That you would use your discretion and maintain presence into the meeting, but you're in, so
You are not able to take electronic messages and stuff. So you should not be opening your mail while you're in a council meeting.
And that would You know, obviously, we're not
It's already part of the program.
Right, I know that. I'm just saying, I just
Councilmember Moller?
I mean, back to the discussion about the tax consequences of this, because it could, you know, really be up to like $500 bucks. So we could either gross that up or just take out the 64-gigabyte part. And that way, if you didn't really want an additional tax burden, you could buy something with less memory. So But I mean, I think we would need to kind of talk about that. But, I mean, it is pretty significant if it is really going to be for real use. I mean, I don't need another gadget, quite frankly. But I think it's great that we're doing this. And no one said that yet. So I think it is really great we're going paperless, so
Julie, do you recall offhand the price difference with the 32-gigabyte unit?
It's about $150.
Yes. Yes.
So I mean, that would be one thing to look at. And again, if you feel that the stipend amount is not adequate and you want to stay conservative with a 64, we can raise that. This was We struggled a little bit trying to figure out how much you would be comfortable with and what that
So my question, because I have some comments to make once we finally start talking about it. And part of it has to do with what's already been brought up. I don't think this stipend is appropriate at all. $44 above the cost of this device. And we're expecting council to all sign up for a plan at more than $44 in a single month, probably. We'll have to talk about that. But on page two of three, service coverage includes the following. So this is if we keep this as is. And I had the question or I was going to make the comment that Councilmember Hall made about the three-year replacement plan. But this talks about coverage of up to two incidents of accidental damage from handling each subject to a $49 service fee. I'm not sure what that means exactly. Is that total failure of the device?
Yes. This is the Apple hardware coverage that they provide to you. It's optional. Basically, if you break your screen or your iPad stops working, the $49 would be considered a deductible to replace the unit or to replace the screen.
So the individual would be responsible for the $49? But that is part of the
The $99?
$931.
No, it is not. The Apple Care Plan is separate. It is a $99
It's part of the $44 on top of it.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, that's the only question I had that hasn't already been asked. So since we have no members of the public, I know there's no public comment. So we can continue this discussion. For me personally, it seems to me that we should know from some of our neighbor jurisdictions about the memory issue, if they have 64 or less, if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I have not heard any negatives from the supervisors I've talked to.
We did speak with Neither have we. We have spoken with staff at the county of Napa and American Canyon. We met with them. They have the 64 gig. American Canyon, I can't really speak for the county of the size of the devices that they have. American Canyon went into this the same reason that we're looking at it as industry standard and the size of memory that you cannot upgrade once you've purchased it.
And I get the need to go above what we think we might need for that very reason. But I'm wondering if the split screen issue is app-specific to Is it iAnnotate?
iAnnotate is one of the apps, the one that I've got right now. It is one of the apps, yes.
When I've been at flood control meetings like I was today, I thought for sure that I'd seen Supervisor Luce using split screen, whether that's iAnnotate or something else, that he was scrolling down on the left and hit something and the right side came up.
That's what we need.
So But that was Supervisor Luce. So I'm not sure if he can do it, the other supervisor should be able to do it.
Yes. And that's
That sounds like a software issue, not the hardware issue.
Right.
Julie, one thing that I've seen the difference of is if Excuse me. You can pull up I've pulled PDFs into my Staff reports from NCTPA, for example. And I've seen the board of supervisors. And the difference And I'm asking this question as an assumption Tell me if I'm wrong Is that the software you all use, they show the very important difference of the indexing
Yes.
Of all the pages
Yes.
And all of that. So I have seen supervisors literally click on one thing. So, I have seen supervisors literally click on one thing, and then you have on your screen that says table of contents, and they click there, and then go back to page 138. So this whole, oh, it's in the second part of the packet, no, it's just page 172, click on that. Is that, that seemed to really take away that usability of the split screen idea, because then the screen gets very small, but I had never seen any ability to split it.
And, and...
And it could be the program.
And just know that, you know, this is, this is the beginning, we're, we're starting with a handful of apps that we know that other agencies use, we will be exploring, and, and we want, we want to do it right, we want to do it the easiest, most effective way. So, so with that, that's why we are phrasing this as the beta test phase, because that's what we're doing. We're just testing these apps, we want to find the best one that works, you know, for our process.
So let me invite the council to comment on the device specifically that's being recommended. Is there consensus to accept the recommendation of the 64 gig? And I'm, the stipend is the next question, but if we feel like that's, it sounds like staff's recommendation based on, you know, talking to others in the neighborhood and the industry standard, so is that something that appears to be acceptable?
Just the device, we're not gonna, we're gonna talk about keyboards and other stuff too?
No.
Okay. The device is fine.
That'll potentially be answered in the stipend conversation.
Okay, good.
Because I agree with the Vice Mayor about making this a burden, financial burden on us or future council members, no, that means it's stipend.
Oh, right, now, can I ask the device?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I think the device makes sense. I've really never regretted in my life buying more memory, just because over time, everything gets bigger and bigger. So, on a device perspective, to make it last two or four years, or however long it lasts...
Oh yeah, buy the best.
Buy the big one. The stipend is a different issue.
Just knowing you brought up PDFs and being able to download...
And I totally agree with the iPad, totally.
I do too.
The, the PDFs can be sizable, especially with graphics. So, roughly speaking, it looks like, we aren't, we aren't there officially yet, but that part of this, now, the question has to do, no, the only other comment, I, I made a note about the device and the storage capacity, is what about iCloud? Did you look into anything about iCloud server, which is basically virtual server storage? That, that might be an issue as we talk about the stipend, if we feel like the money's not enough, or we don't want to save more than $1,000, but we need a bigger buffer in there. iCloud storage, where you don't need to store, especially because these aren't our files necessarily coming off of the town server, can we use virtual storage to make up for what might not be on the device?
You can, and, and the devices do come with, I believe it's five gigabytes of free storage, but you have to purchase the additional storage. It's just like the cellular plan, you would have to per, you know, it, there's just, it depends on how much you want to buy, the costs vary. I mean, it's no more than probably $50, and it is annually, not monthly.
Okay, so just, I bring that back up as we talk about the stipend, in case there's just not enough wiggle room, there's no way $44 is enough, in my opinion, to cover everything past the device. So the question is, if, if 975 is our ceiling, then we gotta get that 931 number down.
So, I, I have to say, my perspective on it, and I agree with a little bit of Steve, is what I would like to be able to say is, there's a, there's a base use case that any council member now or in the future could get the technology, get the base of what they needed, they don't have to go out and get a nice leather cover, whatever it is, that's, that's sort of a personal choice. The keyboard, that to me is a personal choice.
It is.
But, is it essential to have the device and have the cellular plan on there? I, I can argue both sides of that. I would think that whatever the essential pieces of that are, that's what the stipend should cover, and is, I mean...
What about the tax?
Is it possible to do a, let's, let's say it's a cellular plan, because I'm also cognizant of, I don't want everybody saying, oh, you know, the council's buying themselves great new iPads, and they've got these beautiful data plans, that if it's, the stipend is a one-time thing, is it possible to have a purchase, and then say, we've got a cellular plan, and as long as you're on the council, you get $50 a month?
That is an option, and some agencies have, have done that.
And when you're off, you're off, and then that, that cost is not built into the...
That is definitely an option that we can, we can address, because some agencies do handle it that way.
It's the problem with that being a use of public funds to have my cellular plan for my personal use.
That's your challenge.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking specifically...
That is why we did not include it, we felt it was a conflict.
Is that a legal interpretation, or is that...
It's one of, but I don't, we're not uncomfortable, if you want to talk about a different threshold dollar amount, that is perfectly okay. We know, we came in being very conservative on that number, and if you want to build more in to cover some of those options, and, to be perfectly honest, we did not think of the loaded tax rate on anybody, because that's, so that's, so I mean, if you think that number needs...
Are you thinking on the $400 a month we get as council members? $405?
Looked on it, more on the device cost. So if, if you feel that 1,300 or 1,400 is the appropriate number, I will also tell you that those numbers are not out of line with what we're seeing other entities. You know, we are seeing some that come in lower, and, but, you know, we understand that, these are all good questions.
They are very good questions.
We've looked through, and I tend to agree with the Vice Mayor, that what options, and, you know, each one of you will have a different technique on what type of cover you want, or how you're doing, and additional apps, you know, and there will be some level of investment you need to make, but, I mean, we're not, don't, I don't want you to feel that we're gonna say 975 is your ceiling, no, that's just, we came out and did that, and if that needs to be 1,300, it's 1,300.
Well... Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I guess, I guess my comment would be, I mean, as Vice Mayor suggested, you have the device, it's the base device, regardless of what council member this one, you know, or future is getting the device, they should have the base set of applications and the cost recovery on that, and those are going to be, I'm assuming, consistent. You know, you don't, you don't have to pay for upgrades or updates to those typically. I've never seen the payment for an update. I mean, you buy it the first time, and it's yours. You know, I jokingly said, factoring in the, the tax, or grossing up for the tax, the reality is everyone in this, at this dais has a, and everyone out in the town staff has a different tax rate, and that's due to different situations, so I don't know how you deal with that as a, you know, recovery for the fact that we're gonna make this transition, or we're gonna propose this transition. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look in the mirror and say, eat it. And then what I'm gonna say is that, you know, once you've covered that base, we could always discuss the, the cellular plan and the requirement thereof, but I think you just have, you know, a base package, everyone's responsible for that, it's a reimbursement, it's income, and you move on.
Just to note, that the difference between the cellular-enabled device and a non-cellular-enabled device is $100.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
It's...
Councilmember Warren Beck?
Can I point out that we'll be paying monthly for the cellular plan and the warranty plan, is that correct?
Well, you pay the warranty plan upfront in whole, it's $99.
Just for the...
Just one time.
Okay.
Well, it's usually for a two or two-year period.
Two-year period, well, you pay $99 for a two-year period, thank you.
And then after the end of two years, you can re-up.
Yeah, if you choose, yes. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I'm gonna make a pitch for at least some level, and maybe we can figure out what a minimum is for grossing up for taxes. I mean, you know, it's, I don't think any of us are probably in the zero compartment, so...
14%.
You know, but anyway, you know, it is significant. I mean, I, I really don't think it's asking a whole lot, we do give a tremendous amount of our time for this council for $400 a month, and just, so I really don't think that is unreasonable, and, and who knows what future council members are gonna be coming, and it might be more important than it is to some people right now. So, I think that would be fair to come up with a general ballpark number of, I'll throw out 25%, that's, you know, half of 50%. I know you probably, I think 14%, federal and state, remember, there's two levels of taxes here. So, that's just a number I'd kind of throw out, and, or, you know, we could buy something that didn't have as much memory. I mean, I'm kind of open to, to kind of either option, if somebody, you know, didn't think they needed that much memory, and taxes were concerned, and they could have the, what, what is the, the next option that is...
32.
And how much less is that?
$150 less.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I would say my, really going off of both of your comments, my proposal would be, calculate the cost of the iPad to purchase it. I would agree that it should be enabled for cellular, for 4G, and at least the base, I think it should be 64. Look at the, the apps that you're most likely gonna have, and, you know, maybe that's $50. I would include the Apple Care, and then if, if you break it, you pay the deductible, that's, that's the way I would look at it, you know. And I would take all of those and gross them up, I wish it was 25%, I would say 33% personally.
I'll go with 33, just two out of five.
And if you want to, honestly, if you want to have a cellular plan, I personally consider that a bit of a luxury, you can come to Jan Foddeley and get free Wi-Fi, if you'd like.
You can go online and get free Wi-Fi.
You can get, yeah, so I think the cellular plan is, I think is, is, to me, is a little bit of an extra luxury that is ultimately not necessary. To me, it's no different than coming, actually coming to Town Hall and picking this up yourself. If you have to, you can come to Town Hall and download it. So, I think that we should do that piece, and the rest of it is sort of the personal benefit of your own, and all the other accessories.
Personal benefits, okay.
That's my, my view.
Let's add those up and do the math.
Well, let's have further conversation.
No, I'm not saying we're doing that as a done, but we need to give you a number, that's a pardon. I mean, that didn't, that didn't come out with a number.
I would disagree only with the part of the cellular plan being purely a luxury, because I, I agree, as, as Julie pointed out in her presentation, that there are times when, if we're going to truly have this thing be our source of all information, there are going to be times when, I wish I had the binder, but I haven't, but I'm not in town, and I can't get it. If I'm in an airport coming back from a conference, and I, on a Friday, or Saturday, can't get it yet, I'd like to read it on the plane, that kind of thing. No, it should not be the luxury level by any means, but there should be a, and, and maybe this should not yet be in the resolution, we need to find out, what kind of plan do we need to get kind of the, the baseline of adequate access?
Cellular?
I don't, yeah, I don't know that we know how much cellular time we need to access twice-a-week meetings and other agenda items as they come in, kind of thing.
What I have done with this iPad, I, I mean, I have it Wi-Fi enabled for my home for here. I purchased the $15 a month plan, it's 250 megabytes, so it's not a ton, so I'm, so I'm waiting, gig, yeah, megabytes, sorry. I'm waiting to, to evaluate that, just to see, okay, where is this gonna get me? I mean, I've talked to other people that have the same one, and it's been more than enough. So, I mean, it really is, it, it really will vary on the usage. I mean, it's just hard to gauge, because the personal use, you know, I mean, if you're somewhere, it's, it's just gonna be hard to gauge unless you strictly use it for meetings only, to, to determine that, what the usage I think will be. I think that would be hard, hard to measure.
To be honest, looking at it this way, right now, I use my personal iPad for town email all the time. I'm paying the entire amount for that cellular service, and I'm working on town business. I'm not getting any cost recovery on that. So, there is some value in, if there's a stipend that includes a base level of cellular coverage for town business, then if I want to buy more for my personal business, then I'm, at least, I'm coming out ahead a little bit.
And, and those, those costs would vary depending on who your carrier is, they're different. I mean, it's just a different, you know, variety, AT&amp;T is, is, they're just completely different. I mean, they're not completely separate from each other in cost, I mean, I, I think the, the most, that was, the highest amount was $50 a month for both of them, so, but there's the mid-range plans in between. So that would really, I mean, it would just be a personal choice.
Well, I also, there's a little bit, maybe we're starting to nitpick too much, but talking about the three-year recovery, or replacement plan, and two-year election cycles, how that factors in, if, I'll use, you know, Councilmember X is on the third year of the plan, gets it, and then the next year does not run, they've had to buy a two-year plan that they're paying for personally, you know, for coverage, that, do you just eat that?
Well, that, that is why we left it optional.
And they get to keep the iPad.
Yeah, they're keeping the device.
The town paid for it.
No.
No, they got a stipend.
You're getting a stipend, you gotta...
Stipend, yeah.
In principle, the money came from a different party, it's income, otherwise you wouldn't be taxed on it.
Right.
The town paid for it.
And we won't argue about that point.
All right.
But they're going with a three-year plan, I would argue 18 months now.
Sound manager, yes, please, let's...
Okay.
All right, if we assume that the device costs, we have the device cost at 931, $99 for the maintenance warranty plan, rounded up $50 for app applications, and then the tax consequence factor of 33%, rounded to an even number is 1,450.
1091 grossed up by 33% is 10,000, is 1,450.
That was what you guys just said, you wanted me to gross it up.
You sure you did the math right?
Oh, it's 143640.
Did you gross it up or multiply it?
Oh, I multiplied it.
Because by giving us, by giving 1,400, then you gotta multiply it by 33%, subtract that, you gotta gross it up, which means you gotta divide it by .67.
Okay, you do it, Richard.
We're making more, and so now it's a higher amount.
It is different.
The other factor that you can consider, if you wanted to do a $10 a month credit towards your cellular plan, add $240 more to your two-year stipend, and write it as a two-year program.
I think it's, I think so. So you said it was 941 plus 130?
931.
931, plus 99, plus 50, do your special math, and it equals?
Yes, okay, so it's 1,050, or 1,080, right? You divide that by this group's number of .67, so you go to 1611.
So 1611.
And that's without Wi-Fi.
1611, and then if you want to add any credit towards...
So what's your basic Wi-Fi?
Sorry. Mine that I've had, $15, I think there's, I think the base for, is, let's say a $20 base, Verizon's base is $20.
A month.
Eighteen, a month, and AT&amp;T's base is 15.
Some of you may also have different plans, Sprint's coming out, some of you may have AT&amp;T, Xfinity, there's all different things that you can share a device, so I mean, the, the plans are evolving, and depend on what you have.
Well, they are, they are evolving, but currently, because just as, I mean, currently it's just AT&amp;T and Verizon, so, like Steve has Sprint, he'll have to go to AT&amp;T or Verizon, so...
Now, Sprint's come out with a plan.
I, I hadn't heard of that yet.
Oh, it isn't?
Not for, not for my part.
So let's get back to, so the, the numbers, if we're talking $20, let's just say, $20 a month over a two-year plan...
It's 480.
$480.
No, I did, I did 10, if you did 20, it could be 480.
You said 20.
Yeah, well, Julie just said 15 to 20 dollars were the two plans for AT&amp;T and Verizon. So if it's 20 dollars base plan, add 480 to the 16, what?
1611, you're at 2 grand, 2, 2, 290, 2090.
And Steve, did you say that, that neighboring municipalities have arranged that that is comparable?
High?
No.
It would be on the high-high side.
So, and I will just express to this council that the reason it is that high is the 33% gross up for taxes.
Yes.
Oh.
Absolutely.
That is exactly why it is that...
And I, and I do need to point out that with that additional amount of money, we did not budget for that. We did not budget with those numbers, I'm just pointing that out.
So then the council needs to discuss what an acceptable stipend is, based on the fact that it will be a money-losing proposition for council members, in some cases, to be below that number. However high that sounds, that's the real cost to the council.
Well, this is where I go back to the, this is the, this is the, you know, just the sound of it. If you told me it's $35 a month, I'd be like, yeah, whatever, 35 bucks a month, but when you gross that up over two years, and to some number, then it gets to be a big number, and, so I...
But we have not factored in the cost savings to the town.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Where the cost, the, the town is saving far more than $2,000 a year, or over two years, I mean.
13.
So, I mean, little, legitimately, how, I mean, this gets to the question of, what are other people doing, and how they handle that on the price side of it?
What, what, most jurisdictions, and, and I'll speak directly about American Canyon, that's where we spent a day up there with them, they did a 850 stipend, I believe their devices were, they're, they did it a couple of years ago, so they were less money, they weren't the, the latest and greatest, there was the iPad 2. So they did an 850 stipend, and their device was 762, I believe, so...
Just, but just once, not, not every year there's a stipend?
Nope, one time.
Okay.
So, but in principle, what we, what we just discussed, just to reiterate, is $2,000 a person.
You could spread out your cost over time.
Times 13 people. That's $26,000 or $13,000 a year for implementing this technology.
Over two years.
Oh, yes, for implementing this technology for two years.
13,000 a year for the entire staff that's involved in council meetings, basically.
Correct.
Management and council.
We can amend the budget, so I mean, if that, if that's the number that you feel is appropriate for the program, we can go back and add to the budget to support that.
But one of the challenges when you just throw out a number of $13,000 in cost, is we don't have a number to offset that in savings yet.
We did have.
I, I will say, Michelle has, Michelle did do a lot of analysis on the return on investment that was based on a larger group, so we just didn't feel like it was...
So I'm gonna make the recommendation we continue this item to our next council meeting, so we can have that number adjusted to the 13, or whatever number it is of actual devices we're discussing, and what the true savings will, as close as we can estimate. I don't need people counting reams of paper, but-
Well, we should have fully loaded staff costs.
Right.
Right, that's what I, yeah, I'm asking for-
All the aspects.
The cost recovery and staff time and and hard materials saved, so we can look at our true, what's the net in two years?
I think there's a couple of things to look into that. We we have some number. I do want to point out that in most cases, you're not, staff's not going to go away, so I don't want to give you a false impression on when you talk about what we're going to be able to do though is redeploy that staff resource to other things that we're currently not getting to and as you all know, we're very lean in admin support. So I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that.
The appropriate staff time that's going to be saved, so is there, I'm going to move that we continue the items to our next meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, and may maybe at the same time really get a good handle on these costs.
Of course.
You know, and really-
Yeah, that's the whole point of continuing is to be able to compare exactly what we're talking about.
And maybe additional information if it's not too much time past American Canyon, because I've seen numbers-
No, and we do have more, I just pulled that out. I mean, we do have a lot more data than that.
Because I've seen numbers high.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a motion in a second, so so I'm kind of sorry, just going to get to this, we have more agenda tonight. A motion is second on continuing this to the next council meeting.
Do we need that? Do we need a vote to continue?
Yes, we have a motion in a second, let's, all in favor to continue the item in the next meeting?
Aye.
If it's unnecessary, it's unnecessary. Um, staff informational reports, we we see one listed there, feel free to look into that report as desired. Council meeting reports.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes, oh, we do have one.
I also want to mention that the paving was not finished today, so there'll be more paving tomorrow on Vista, Fennel, Mulberry and Washington, California. And also there'll be, the Hopper Creek path will be closed between Yount and Fennel, so for seal coat tomorrow, so the path will be closed until that's finished.
Okay, sorry, and I think I may have jumped right past our OPEB investment report.
No, just clarify, I just, it's a good item.
Remember, information items are there for your review only if you have questions or we're not trying to do a staff report.
Otherwise, we'll put the item as a regular item.
Which is what I I felt I was offering up, and if I could, I will pause and see if there are any questions about-
Yes, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Item 11. Are there any questions on item 11 at this point?
Uh, item 11, this is the OPEB.
Yes.
So I have one question. So your capital management, did you specifically ask them if they're specifically recommending international markets at this time and in the future? I mean, everybody's saying-
The investment funds?
Yes, bail on those. I mean, this is not just a micromanagement thing, I mean.
Yeah, we talked about, I mean, we we talked about all of the aspects of those.
Okay. Well, make sure that everyone's totally aware that you're in there and you want to be there.
Yep.
Well, I mean, I think the the discussion that was had was specifically around the performance of our investments, the fact that it's in an irrevocable status and frankly, that it's a diversified portfolio. Um, you know, I think we joked, I would say that we're joked about being in certain markets or otherwise, and the reality is, you know, we need to have a diversification of these funds and exiting one market to try to, uh, what's the, what's the terminology they use? You know, to to get all the way out of a market to try to, you know, minimize loss or maximize gains or timing the market is not an appropriate way for us to handle this kind of an investment fund.
No, I I totally agree with that, but some people make specific decisions not to invest in tobacco stocks, not to, you know, go to international funds, so and and they have, you know, selected criteria for doing that. So, you know, not everything has to get thrown in, you don't have to have a million pieces of the pie to be diversified, so.
Well, that's true.
Well, the eight, the the current international is only 8% of the whole portfolio.
Which could be almost 10 if it goes up.
That's what we hope, that's what we'd like.
But it's going down, so anyway.
Well, and they have balancing targets throughout, so, so yes.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to council meeting reports. Flood Control and Water Conservation District did meet today and the highlight as it pertains to Yountville, there was approval on signing a joint zone project maintenance and watershed management cost sharing agreement with the town of Yountville for a maximum of $20,000 to fund vegetation and debris management and sediment removal of Hopper Creek. So that was good news there and also we got a report on the vice chair, who is Mayor Tackle, and staff who went back to Washington DC to lobby on continued funding for the flood control project, which is continuing to be a challenge. And they've also installed interpretive signs in four of what will be a total of eight locations that describe the ecology, cultural, historic and city elements and flood control elements that are along the flood control project. That was today's flood control meeting. Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, as I recall, and the vice mayor could add to this if necessary, the highlight for us was, as we discussed earlier tonight, the NCTPA's approval of the expanded service for the Yountville Trolley to the hours of 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sunday. Was there anything that you had on top of that?
No, I think the only other thing that was of interest is some some route fare changes. And again, there's, there's a lot of changes in in the system going on right now in anticipation of the transit center being opened on the east side of the Napa River in downtown and that the new route that will be split, the Route 10 will be split into 10 and 11. The fares aren't going up, but in some cases they're going down, just the way it works out, so. There, I think it's, it's going to be, if you've, I don't know if anybody's driven by, but that building is framed out and it's, it's, it will, I I'm still very optimistic that that is going to bring some very good transit changes for Napa County, but that's it.
Local HCC Formation Commission of Napa County, any report?
Lafco met yesterday, I won't bore you with the small items that we discussed, but-
No, it's for Napa by?
See, uh, no, we did not discuss Napa by at all. We did discuss the Lake Bariessa Resort Improvement District. All I can say is be glad you don't run a water system with 480 residents, not even a council, but residents. Lafco's state convention is starting tonight, maybe tomorrow. I'm going down there, it's in Monterey, so I'm going down tomorrow afternoon. And then the official business of the state Lafco is Thursday morning and as the chair, I'm the, one of the voting delegates for the county, but it sounds like they have some unopposed elections for the Lafco board, which is actually very unusual, so, there we go.
Thank you. Napa River Watershed Information Center and Conservancy report.
Yes, we did meet last Thursday, however, there wasn't a quorum, so we had an informational meeting rather than any decisions made, but we did have two presentations, one on the on the flood project through downtown and there were lots of slides showing the before and after and what an extraordinary job they had done to build these culverts that, you know, so the water would really ride around the opera house and all. And then there was another informational presentation about fish in the, in the creeks that flow into the Napa River. And the good news is that our young striped bass are actually, as they're coming up, they get measured and because they go back out. And so it's really important when they go back out to see that they be at least seven inches long, that'll give them a a chance at surviving and coming back in the following year to lay eggs, so. And ours are on the large side, so it was all good.
Very good, thank you. Other official meeting reports from council? No? I'll just make a few announcements and others can follow. I did want to just mention in case folks are catching the tail end of this, that we did welcome our new Yountville Trolley vehicle this afternoon at a ribbon cutting. I want to thank again the NCTPA staff and Violia Transportation staff for helping bring that together, also our staff for really doing a great job of not only helping bring this vehicle online, but also getting our extended service starting as of November 1st. Also, Yountville Days coming up this weekend, starting with movie night on the 4th or on Friday, the 5th, and that movie is?
Cars 2.
Cars 2, and it begins at?
Dusk.
Dusk.
What time is that?
It'll be 7:00. The Yountville 5th graders are doing a fundraiser for their outdoor ed trip, so they are selling pizza and salad and that'll start at 6:00.
Okay.
We do anticipate the movie starting by about 7:30, it is getting dark earlier, so.
October 6th, on Saturday, we have the Chili Cookoff. And anything else, part of Yountville Days?
Uh, Sunday.
Well, on Saturday is what I meant. Sunday, we have a little bit going on, yes, parade and festival. Samantha, would you like to give us the details?
Steal your thunder, sorry.
No.
Um, so Sunday is the parade and festival, the parade starts at noon at the Veterans Home and our parade grand marshal this year is Sharon Stensos with the Yountville Suns, we're honoring her. We have 40 entries in the parade, which is pretty impressive. Good thing we have such a long route. And then we will kick off, the the festival actually starts at 11:00 up at the the park, but it'll officially kick off with the band about 1:00 o'clock as the parade ends, so.
And it runs until 4:00?
Runs until 4:00, lots of great free kids activities, food, wine, beer, terrific band this year, new band, so it'll be a good time.
What time are we supposed to?
11:30 at the Veterans Home.
Thank you.
With logo attire and-
Any color allowed?
Any color, apparently. We're not uniform in our color, but we will have Yountville ball caps available for everyone who's willing to put them on.
Who need sun coverage.
I do.
I will get them for you before you leave tonight.
Blue, the dark blue Yountville hats.
Hail blue.
Hail blue.
They're all-
We have you, we'll stalk you with candy and water.
They're lighter than that, no, they're cool, I wear them all the time.
We'll take them for you.
Two other things I just want to mention quickly, I wanted to recognize our Yountville Arts Committee who put on a really wonderful reception yesterday, or Sunday afternoon for the latest addition to the art walk. It's called The Chef and it's, it was made by artist Lorenzo Mills. If you haven't seen it yet, it's across the street from Bistro Jean T on the Velagio property next to the giant oak tree. It's really a very fun, whimsical, but also incredibly impressive, uh, made piece, the